In compliance with NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this duly and regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Planning Board has been published and posted in all appropriate locations. Roll call, please.
Mr. Pressing.
Mr. Bernstein.
Here.
Mr. Fleming.
Here.
Mr. Herring.
Here.
Mr. Riker.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Marzum.
Mr. Heller.
Mr. Wall. Dr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Herman.
Here. Thank you. Can I please get a motion for the PIM voucher for the Recording Secretary for March 27, 2023?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we? We have the minutes from February 27, 2023, the regular meeting. We're going to do a roll call. I don't believe everybody is eligible for it. So can I please get a motion for the approval of the minutes? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pressing.
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Mr. Fleming.
Yes.
Mr. Herring.
Yeah.
Mr. Heller. Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Herman.
Yes. Thank you. You know, just moving right along, we do have an ordinance review to, you know, to go over. And I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Peters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The governing body at their last council meeting introduced on what's known as first reading ordinance 10-23, an ordinance of the township of Jackson, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending Chapter 244-142, entitled Lots of Record. I'll take a moment and read the ordinance. It's only a page and a half long. The governing body has scheduled a second or public reading for tomorrow night's council meeting. The referral to the planning board is to make a determination that it's consistent with the master plan in our zoning office, our zoning ordinances. We've seen these before. But because the ordinance itself is, deals with existing lots, I thought it was important that we at least read it into the record so the board members understand what it is we're going to be discussing. Now therefore be ordained by the Township Council of Township of Jackson, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey as follows. Section one, purpose. Chapter 244, 142 addresses residential non-conforming lots which were previously created by a subdivision and where such lots are located in the R1 residential zoning district and were conforming at the time of such prior approval, resulting in the single-family home being constructed on such lot. The current ordinance permits such residences to be expanded and accessory structures constructed, provided said construction complies with the R1 residential zoning district standards with respect to front yard, side yard, and rear yard setbacks and minimum lot size. It is the intention of this ordinance to clarify that these provisions permit the property owner owning a non-conforming lot to also demolish the older structure and to construct a new residential dwelling upon such lot, provided the new single-family home meets the, meets all the required setbacks regardless of lot width. Section two. Chapter 244, 142, entitled Lots of Record shall be amended to add an additional provision entitled E. This section shall also authorize the owner of a residential non-conforming lot which has been previously developed as a single-family residence in the R1 residential zoning district and which was conforming at the time that said dwelling was constructed to demolish and replace that existing dwelling with a newly constructed residential home on said lot, provided the new home meets all other front yard, side yard, and rear yard setbacks required in the R1 residential zoning district with the exception of lot width. Section three. If any section, subsection, sentence, clause, phrase, or portion of this ordinance is for any reason held to be invalid or unconstitutional by a court of competent jurisdiction, such portion shall be deemed a separate, distinct, and independent provision and such holdings shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions thereof. Section four. Any sections, subsections, clause, phrase, ordinances, or parts of the ordinance inconsistent herewith or hereby repealed. Section five. This ordinance shall take effect after second reading and publication as required by law. The initial reading was March 14, 2023, and the scheduled second reading is March 28, 2023. So the R1 lots in town have had over the last 25 or 30 years, more than one set of bulk standards associated with them, which creates existing non-conforming lots. For those of you who are familiar with the R1 issues in town, previously 15 years ago or so, we rezoned certain portions of R1 land to R2, R3, R5, and we created a lot of record ordinance that dealt with lots that were rezoned. It used to be in R1, now they're in something else, and they're undersized. That's called like a grandfathering provision. So that's where the original lot of record ordinance came from. This particular ordinance, this subsection E that we want to add, deals with the lots that are still in the R1 zone that may have been conforming at the time they were constructed and are still undersized. The changes that we have over the decades have dealt with lot width. So there are apparently still a number of lots in the R1 zone that are deficient as to lot width. So that being said, our office finds that this ordinance is in fact consistent with our master plan and our zoning ordinance, and it meets the intent and purpose of the land use law because we're trying to rectify something that's been in oversight for a period of time. So I'd recommend that the board find that this is consistent with our current master plan and land use ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or anything to add?
I move with the ordinance as recommended by our profession.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Pressing.
Based on our professionals' testimony that's consistent with the master plan, I vote yes.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Mr. Fleming.
Yeah.
Mr. Herring.
Yeah.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Given it is consistent with our master plan, yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Herman.
Yes. Thank you. I believe, Ms. Morrison, there is a change to the agenda schedule. Would you like to? I believe there was a meet, there was a meeting added for April 24? Sorry? Sure.
We have a situation, a court-mandated meeting that we're going to hold on April 24 that will be dealing with Jackson Trails. April 24, 7:00 PM, 7:30. No, 7. We decided on 7, right? Earlier the better. Yes, 7. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any legal matters to discuss?
No legals at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Cle, any engineering matters and stuff? Thank you. So now we'll just move ahead to the applications. I'm not going to be sitting on this application, so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Campbell. Thank you.
We're going to be hearing testimony on Block 1102, Lot 24.02 WB Ocean 26 LLC.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, I'm Donna Jennings from the law firm of Willen, Skulman, and Spitzer on behalf of the applicant. The applicant this evening is seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct three high schools on property located at 1020 Farmingdale Road and identified as Block 1102, Lot 24.02 on the township's tax maps. The property is approximately 7.73 acres and is located in the R5 residential zone where schools are listed as a permitted use pursuant to ordinance Section 244-46. Each school is proposed to be two stories with Building A containing 9,525 square feet, Building B containing 11,000 square feet, and Building C containing 10,195 square feet. Applicant's proposal not only satisfies but exceeds the parking requirement set forth under ordinance Section 244-197N where one parking space per three students is required. There are 522 students anticipated, thus 174 parking spaces are required and 232 parking spaces are proposed. There are no variances with that, this application, although there are several design waivers which will be addressed by the site engineer. With respect to the parking, there were comments from the board's consultants and they asked us to shift some of those back because some of them are located within the front yard setback. Not a variance, but a design waiver. So we did take a look at that and the site engineer will go through that. There are 55 spaces that we can land bank for now, not construct, and that would leave us with 177 parking spaces outside the front yard setback. In support of the proposal, the applicant will present the testimony to the following witnesses: the site engineer, Richard Oberman, who is sitting to my left, the architect, Naftali Gut, the traffic engineer, John Ray, and the professional planner, Justin, who your last name is now escaping me. Say it out loud. As a matter of record-keeping, the applicant has received the following reports: the board planners' report, last revised March 22, 2023. Because we did have an opportunity, after we submitted this particular application, reports were generated by the consultant.
You know, just moving right along, we do have a ordinance review to, you know, to go over. And I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Peters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The governing body at their last council meeting, introduced on what's known as first reading ordinance ten dash twenty-three, an ordinance of the township of Jackson, county of Ocean, state of New Jersey, amending chapter two forty-four dash one forty-two, entitled Lots of Record. I'll take a moment and read the ordinance. It's only a page and a half long. The governing body has scheduled a second or public reading for tomorrow night's council meeting. The referral to the planning board is to make a determination that it's consistent with the master plan in our zoning office, our zoning ordinances. We've seen these before, but because the ordinance itself is, um, deals with existing lots, I thought it was important that we at least read it into the record so the board members understand what it is we're going to be discussing. Now therefore be ordained by the Township Council of Township of Jackson, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey as follows. Section one, purpose. Chapter two forty-four, one forty-two addresses residential non-conforming lots which were previously created by a subdivision and where such lots are located in the R one residential zoning district and were conforming at the time of such prior approval, resulting in the single-family home being constructed on such lot. The current ordinance permits such residences to be expanded and accessory structures constructed, provided said construction complies with the R one residential zoning district standards with respect to front yard, side yard, and rear yard setbacks and minimum lot size. Is the intention of this ordinance to clarify that these provisions permit the property owner owning a non-conforming lot to also demolish the older structure and to construct a new residential dwelling upon such lot, provided the new single-family home meets the, meets all the required setbacks regardless of lot width. Section two. Chapter two forty-four, one forty-two, entitled Lots of Record shall be amended to add an additional provision entitled E. This section shall also authorize the owner of a residential non-conforming lot, which has been previously developed as a single-family residence in the R one residential zoning district and which was conforming at the time that said dwelling was constructed to demolish and replace that existing dwelling with a newly constructed residential home on said lot, provided the new home meets all other front yard, side yard, and rear yard setbacks required in the R one residential zoning district with the exception of lot width. Section three, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, phrase, or portion of this ordinance is for any reason held to be invalid or unconstitutional by a court of competent jurisdiction, such portion shall be deemed a separate, distinct, and independent provision, and such holdings shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions thereof. Section four, any sections, subsections, clause, phrase, ordinances, or parts of the ordinance inconsistent herewith or hereby repealed. Section five, this ordinance shall take effect after second reading and publication as required by law. The initial reading was March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and the scheduled second reading is March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. So the R one lots in town have had over the last twenty-five or thirty years, more than one set of bulk standards associated with them, which creates existing non-conforming lots. For those of you who are familiar with the R one issues in town, previously fifteen years ago or so, we rezoned certain portions of R one land to R two, R three, R five, and we created a lot of record ordinance that dealt with lots that were rezoned. It used to be in R one, now they're in something else, and they're undersized. That's called like a grandfathering provision. So that's where the original lot of record ordinance came from. This particular ordinance, this subsection E that we want to add, deals with the lots that are still in the R one zone that may have been conforming at the time they were constructed and are still undersized. The changes that we have over the decades have dealt with lot width. So there are apparently still a number of lots in the R one zone that are deficient as to lot width. So that being said, our office finds that this ordinance is in fact consistent with our master plan and our zoning ordinance, and it meets the intent and purpose of the land use law because we're trying to rectify something that's been in oversight for a period of time. So I'd recommend that the board find that this is consistent with our current master plan and land use ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or anything to add?
I move with the ordinance as recommended by our profession.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bracy?
Based on our professional's testimony, that's consistent with the master plan, I vote yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yeah.
Mr. Herring?
Yeah.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Given it is consistent with our master plan, yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes. Thank you. I believe, Ms. Morrison, there is a change to the agenda schedule. Would you like to? I believe there was a meet, there was a meeting added for April twenty-fourth? Sorry? Sure.
We have a situation, a court mandated meeting that we're going to hold on April twenty-fourth that will be dealing with Jackson Trails. April twenty-fourth, seven P M, seven thirty. No, seven, we decided on seven, right? Earlier the better. Yes, seven. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any legal matters to discuss?
No legals at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Cle, any engineering matters? Thank you. So now we'll just move ahead to the applications. I'm not going to be sitting on this application, so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Campbell. Thank you.
We're going to be hearing testimony on block one-one-zero-two, lot twenty-four-point-oh-two, WB Ocean Twenty-Six LLC.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, I'm Donna Jennings from the law firm of Willen, Skulman, and Spitzer. On behalf of the applicant, the applicant this evening is seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct three high schools on property located at ten-twenty Farmingdale Road and identified as block one-one-zero-two, lot twenty-four-point-oh-two on the township's tax maps. The property is approximately seven-point-seven-three acres and is located in the R five residential zone where schools are listed as a permitted use pursuant to ordinance section twenty-two-four-four-dash-four-six. Each school is proposed to be two stories with building A containing nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet, building B containing eleven-thousand square feet, and building C containing ten-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-five square feet. Applicant's proposal not only satisfies but exceeds the parking requirement set forth under ordinance section two-four-four-dash-one-nine-seven-N, where one parking space per three students is required. There are five-hundred-and-twenty-two students anticipated, thus one-hundred-and-seventy-four parking spaces are required and two-hundred-and-thirty-two parking spaces are proposed. There are no variances with that, this application, although there are several design waivers which will be addressed by the site engineer. With respect to the parking, there were comments from the board's consultants and they asked us to shift some of those back because some of them are located within the front yard setback. Not a variance, but a design waiver. So we did take a look at that and the site engineer will go through that. There are fifty-five spaces that we can land bank for now, not construct, and that would leave us with one-hundred-and-seventy-seven parking spaces outside the front yard setback. In support of the proposal, the applicant will present the testimony to the following witnesses: the site engineer, Richard Obermann, who is sitting to my left, the architect, Naftali Gut, the traffic engineer, John Ray, and the professional planner, Justin, who your last name is now escaping me. Say it out loud. Ossio, thank you. As a matter of record-keeping, the applicant has received the following reports: the board planner's report, last revised March twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. Because we did have an opportunity, after we submitted this particular application, reports were generated by the consultants. We were supposed to be heard in February and there was an issue. So we took that extra time to submit revised plans and thus we have revised reports from both the board planner and the board engineer, both dated March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. There's a fire department report dated January third, two thousand twenty-three, which the revised plans address, and we'll go through that, but we do not have an updated fire department report. There's a police report dated ten-thirteen, two thousand twenty-two, which also doesn't take into account the revised report. And then there's a memo, January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, from the tree specialist, which we believe we also addressed their concerns, but we have not received an updated report. With that, I'd like to have our first witness sworn and we can begin our testimony. Oh yeah, I apologize. That's why I have the engineer. I'm just, I'd like just to give a little overview. I'm not, the attorney does not a witness, so I'm not testifying.
Last for the record.
My name is Richard Obermann, O-B-E-R-M-A-N.
You agree to say the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could, Mr. Obermann, give the board the benefit of your background and qualifications.
I graduated Penn State nineteen-seventy-eight with a bachelor's science degree in civil engineering. I have lived and worked in New Jersey since nineteen-eighty-nine doing land development as a professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey. My licenses are current, and I also have licenses in the surrounding states. I've testified from Bergen County down to Cape May County in multiple townships for the past thirty-some years, and I have been in front of this board also.
Were the board acceptance qualifications?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Just for the record, the site plans were prepared by your office under your direction?
Yes, site plans were prepared by me and under the direction of Glenn Lines, Director of Engineering.
Okay, and if you could describe the site and the surrounding area, and if you're going to refer to some exhibits, let's get them up on the board if we could.
That's exhibit A one, existing conditions of, of the property. The site is identified as block eleven-oh-two, lot twenty-four-oh-two on the tax map and is located in the corner of Farmingdale Road and Pfister. There is a two-story framed dwelling and a one-story garage and horse sheds. The site has some wooded areas on the perimeter with most of the site as pasture. The site gently slopes from east to west. Farmingdale Road is listed as a minor collector in Jackson Township's master plan and its county road. The site is just north of I one-ninety-five, but the nearest interchange is over two miles away. Surrounding land uses, the site is zoned in R five residential, restricted residential zone district. The site is located in a rural area on the northeast side of Jackson Township and north of I one-ninety-five. The lots across Pfister to the east are single-family homes in the R five zone. To the north are residential and farm properties, and the Bells Farm, a large equestrian facility. And to the south across Farmingdale Road is a plant nursery in the R three zone. Properties to the west are also in the R three zone and directly to the west is, are, are the kennels. The property, the properties in the area are a mix of single-family and, and in the single-family agricultural uses and small commercial businesses. Based on the FEMA flood map, the site is not located within the hundred-year flood plan also. Proposal before us is that the applicant is requesting preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct three two-story high schools on the property. Schools are listed as a permitted use in the R five zone. The high school A will be ninety-five-hundred twenty-five square feet or twenty-seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy square feet of total building area. High school B will be eleven-thousand square feet or twenty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-one square feet of building area. High school C will be ten-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-five square feet or twenty-seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-nine square feet of building area. Applicant, the application is fully conforming, no variance ever. There are a hundred and seventy-four students per school anticipated for a total of five-hundred-and-twenty-two. The hours of operation are between seven-fifteen A M to seven-thirty P M with a break from one-forty-five P M to two-thirty P M. Fifteen teachers slash employees will, will be allocated for each school. The, there are no shifts proposed in, in the, in the workers and, and for the employees. Anticipated deliveries each day are, are one, one delivery per day by a small box truck during regular business hours. There are no student driving, but there are, there are proposed buses. Security measures, school is locked and IDs are required to check in, or there is, at this point in time, there are not security guards proposed. Refuse, can you go to exhibit, I think it's A? Eight-three. Those refuse. The location for the garbage, the recycling are here, here, and he, and here.
If you could just describe, you know, up north, south, east, west, because it's being transcribed?
They are to the west, no, wait a minute, that'd be the southwest corner on building C, the southwest corner on building B, and the northwest corner of the parking lot on building A.
Okay, and just so the record's clear, because I'm not sure the audience can see, the top of the page is building C, the middle is B, and the bottom is A, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Excuse me, we're sorry. We prefer the audit, we, we are being recorded, so it's difficult to hear. I'm sure that they will discuss the roads. Thank you.
Right. There, there will be a point in time where everybody from the crowd can question the expert. So if everybody can't have people just calling out in the middle of the crowd, there, there is a function for that as part of this hearing. I, you're just gonna have to wait a little bit. And you'll have a chance to ask him.
Okay, if you could, Richard, just point out, because you did indicate on the record where the site is located and what roads are on, but if you could point it out with using the exhibit.
Yes, the site is located at the northwest corner of Farmingdale Road, which is right here, and Pfister Road, which is right here. This is Pfister, right here.
If you could, moving along, would you address the stormwater management?
Stormwater management for a site, existing runoff from the site basically drains from east to west, from, from Pfister, from small towards the residential area to the west. And there is a small drainage area down below building A, that, just a very small area that drains directly to Farmingdale Road. The, under, under the proposed condition for each school, how about the overlay?
It's important to.
Overlay A two.
Thank you.
Exhibit A two, please. I might, I might have to go to septic there. I don't see it on there either. Can't put bank parking. Um, how about A seven instead, please? They have it on there. The, the proposed condition for.
All right, just A seven for the record is what?
That is the septic and well layout, but it also has utilities on it so that you can see where they are in relation to the septic systems and the water on, and the wells. Um, the, under the proposed condition, each school has a collection system and that water is conveyed directly by pipe to an underground recharge trench, which you can see on each lot, are these dark areas right here. And they're located between C and buildings, C and B, and between A and B, and then along Farmingdale Road right here is another one. Those recharge trenches filter water into the surrounding soils, and that's how the storm, storm, storms are infiltrated. There is a pre-treatment associated with, with each system. Pre-treatment filters are, are installed ahead of each system that all the stormwater from the parking lots are required to go through. It's a new D, with the new D P stormwater rule for green infrastructure so that you pre-treat your water before it goes into the recharge system. In addition to the drainage systems on, on the sites, on, on each individual school, off to the west side of the property, there are open areas of lawn for recreation, and that is the septic system located behind, directly behind building B. Other utilities for the site are the water demand, which is approximately, it's less than six thousand gallons a day. It's fifty-six-hundred-and-seventy gallons per day. It's going to be supplied by water wells. And also in addition to the wells, there's going to be the onsite septic system, which I just pointed out, which will include four thirty-nine-by-forty-four zones for an advanced treatment disposal field totaling sixty-eight-hundred-and-sixty-four square feet. Unless a gymnasium would be added with showers or a cafeteria would be added, then the, that what you see there is actually six units. But right now, with the way the schools are set up, we would only need four because we don't have showers and we don't have a cafeteria. We just have a warming kitchen. Sewers being addressed by that onsite sewer system, which is, which requires that N J D P T W A permit.
Keep your mouth, keep it.
Keep it close, sorry. I, I thought it was doing good there too, right? Uh, septic design does provide chemical and biological treatment of the waste in accordance with the D E P regulation. So that's one of the things that gets concerning about larger septic systems. This size is the, some of the byproducts, so they're pre-treated, then that's part of what the, the housing there is about. And that house is thirty by forty. Treat, it's called a treatment building. Lighting on the site has been installed, will be installed and maintained by the applicant. All lighting to receive underground electrical service, the lighting has been designed to provide or exceed the minimum oh-point-five-foot candles with an average of oh-point-seven. Lighting will be reduced to oh-point-five at all property lines and shut, lighting shields will be provided to reduce the overflow. Uh, that was an updated design that we did provide. There was some lack of some lack of foot candles shown on our last drawing, and, and that has been updated. All lighting is designed to conform to the attached requirements and the recommendations of Illuminati, Illuminating Engineering Society of North America. The land, the landscaping plan, which we were looking at earlier, I think it's A, exhibit A?
Right.
A three. That has also been updated from our previous submission, based on some review letters by a landscape consultant, engineering and planning all had additional comments on landscaping. Plants shall be located, as shown on our drawings, and with locations to be approved by landscape architect prior to the planning plans shall conform to the standards of American nursery stock, and maintenance will begin after each plant has been installed and will continue for ninety days. Parking lot islands have been added throughout the design, which, which weren't there before either, which are here, 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 there's another one here. All through, all throughout the parking lot, islands have been added with additional landscaping for each island. That was also requested by engineering and, and planning comments. There are now a hundred and, no, that's not true. There are two-hundred-and-eighty-one evergreen trees, thirty-three shade trees, seven ornamental trees, and a hundred-and-fifty-one shrubs. Um, that does not include the foundation plant, foundation plannings, which are not included on there, but were included on the last submission, which would typically be right along the building in through here. You can see there's nothing there right now. They, they were dropped off the plan, but they will be put back on, and there were, I, I believe, two-hundred and some foundation plannings that'll be going back on that plan, which I didn't notice until now. Sorry about that. Tree saving plan. Uh, there are no historic trees within the property. An effort will be made, as requested, to save large trees along the property lines. Um, as you can see, the, the clearing along the west property line has been limited, and additional trees have been shown along that, along that line to, to be supplemental to, to the trees in that area, just in case there's some bare areas. All along the northern property line, above building C, a, a whole strip of evergreens have gone in, as lo, as well as along, along the road, as requested. In between the buildings, same thing. Ten-foot wide landscaping evergreens have been placed to, to separate the buildings. Parking, um, as discussed earlier.
You want to show exhibit A four?
Could you go to the exhibit?
A four.
A four. Yep. Parking complies with the ordinance as of right now. Um, we have two-hundred-and-thirty-two spaces, as, as previously said, that's one parking space for three students. Only a hundred-and-seventy-four are required, and we do have parking in the front setback, which we've now shown as grayed out in here, in here, and all along. So all the, all the parking up along the road amounts to fifty-five parking spaces that are in the front yard. And we, we were, we were agreeable to bank those and take them, take them off the plan, and, and that reduces our, our overall parking to a hundred-and-seventy-seven spaces, which still, we are still five spaces of, oh no, three spaces above the required amount. The loading areas for each building, building one, built, on A building, it's right here. They're all twelve by one-hundred-and-twenty feet. On B building, it's on the south side, and on C building, it's also on the south side. It's, it's a loading area for, for buses and for small box trucks of delivery. I also have letters, new letters from both the planner and engineer, and I, I summarize some of the things that are still in the letters that we weren't able to address yet totally from the, from the first one, so I'm gonna go over those quickly so that you, you know where the plans stand in relation to those letters. On, on the planner's comments, uh, under his zoning, Article three is A architectural, and we'll have our architect address the architectural comments in that, and B was under, he had a top, an item of signs, and we have no, no site identifica, identification signs proposed. Uh, traffic, circulation, and parking was C, and the parking has been revised, as previously discussed. A waiver for the parking in the front yard was, was required as part of that, and we are agreeable to take some, banks some of those front yard parking, a waiver of.
Just so the record's clear, though, there are still some spaces that are within that front yard setback, so we're still requesting that design waiver.
There are. Yeah, there are some parking spots right here, 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 and I think this one right, right here is in the front yard also. But, uh, But uh, we will also look at, I think they're in the front yard by about ten or fifteen feet. We will look at moving the building back and seeing if we can shift that parking out of the sep, out of the front yard setback. Uh, looks, we have plenty of room in the back, it might have to elongate the septic system, but um. It might be more important getting those out of the front yard setback to, to avoid the waiver. Uh, there's a waiver for the buffer area along the property lines of, uh, twenty-five foot buffer was required. All the way around, that has been provided now. Um, waiver of the curb radii because we didn't have, we had some non-conforming islands. Within the parking lot that didn't have five foot curb radii, and now they all do. Um, a waiver of the number of two-way drives, that's been reduced, all the drives along um. There's only one two, two-way drive and that comes off of Farmingdale Road now, the other drives are one-way. Um, and there was a waiver for removing the concrete apron. That will be reinserted onto the drawings um that. Just got left off for some reason, I think it has to do with a layer. Just missed it, I, but that was on the drawing first go-around. There's a waiver for length of entrance and exit drives shorter than a hundred feet also. That we could not do anything about, we'll probably lengthen it a little bit more when we, when we move the building back. But it's not going to come out to a hundred feet. Landscaping, a waiver for buffer areas along the property line, that's now been provided. That uh waiver for a ten-foot landscri, landscape strip that's been provided. Waiver of a landscape end islands and dividing strips, that also has been provided. Um, and was, as previously talked about, our lighting uh has been updated. And um, the lighting will be placed on timers. F is solid waste and recyclables, we discussed that previously, where that would be and, and um, that will, that. Pickup will be twice a week as, as of right now, uh, don't see that necessarily being more than that. Uh, utilities uh were discussed previously also, and that's water and sewer and septic system. And miscellaneous environmental uh, under the mi, under H miscellaneous items. Um, it was requested us, for us to testify about the environmental impacts. And um, that has to do with both. Potential impacts and or unavoidable impacts. So as far as the uh project impacts, there, number one would. In our um, this, uh, from the environmental impact statement is, is soil erosion and sediment, sedimentation. Any potential adverse impacts which could result from grading, erosion or sediment. Sedimentation will be migrated by implement, implementation of the required soil erosion sediment control measures. Shown on the plans. Flooding and floodplain disruption, that's item two, the proposed project is not anticipated to cause any fl, flooding. FEMA maps indicated that the site is not located within a flood zone. Three, degradation of surface water quality. The drainage collection system includes inlets and collect runoff from new driveways and surrounding lawn areas. Roof areas for each building will be collected and sent to under, underground recharge systems located under. Uh, under the parking lots for each school. Runoff will filter through the crack and pre-treatment filters, the recharge systems. And the soil horizons, and there will be no degradation, degradation of the surface water quality. Three, four groundwater pollution. There's no adverse effect, impacts of the site's groundwater capabilities expected to propose potable water. Well to cer, wells to serve the site will be constructed in accordance with the well drilling regulations. Uh, which require permits and licensed well driggers to perform the construction of the wells, there are no potential discharges. To groundwater proposed from the site. Reduction of five is reduction of groundwater capabilities, the estimated potable water demand for the development will conform to all regulatory. Requirements related to wells, there are no adverse impacts of the site's groundwater capabilities expected, development of the nature. Typically have a minimal effect of groundwater due to the collection of stormwater runoff to the recharge systems. Sewerage disposal, so, project site is not located within an active sewer service area. Due to the use of septic system to be approved by NJDEP and Ocean County Health Department, no advice of adverse effects. Impacts associated with the sewage are expected. Septic systems design will provide chemical and biological treatment of waste in accordance with DEP regulations. Um, would you like to go to exhibit? A, A.
As far, there, there's our site right here.
Just, what is A eight, please describe it?
A eight is a, other areas that have large septic system design. Currently under, under permit in the Jackson area.
Microphone, use the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry, those, um, that, it, this is our site right here to Diamond. And one of the concerns were that there's no such sites de, developed like this site. That have large septic systems like that, and these are actually the permitted sites. All around Jackson that have similar septic designed systems, they're not just a septic. Um, a, a typical mound or, or septic system, they're, 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 they're larger. Or, or the same size or larger. No.
No comments from the audience at this time, you will be able to ask questions of all the experts. Don't worry, we'll have your chance, so we cannot have yelling out from the audience because. We cannot have comments from the audience because this is being recorded. And the recordings will not pick up your questions, so please be patient and you'll be able to ask all, all the questions you need to ask.
Solid waste disposal. Um, during, during constructions that, such as uh lumber, cardboard, all the, all the wastes. That's um generated by the construction will be collected during dumpsters and disposed of in a, in a matter consistent with local ordinances. Vegetation disruption, construction of proposed development will disturb some forested vegetation in areas along the rear of the property. And the Fister Road, uh, the majority of the site is predominantly cleared for rural agricultural use. With the exception of hedgerows and trees along Fister, uh, complete landscaping plan has been developed for this project. That includes a variety of lawn, shrubs and trees. Uh, the wildlife habitat, although the surrounding area contains developments, some of the listed species will utilize wooded areas around the site. As they are known to exist in Ocean County, the subject site is cleared. With the exception of hedgerows and some trees along the roads, population birds, mammals might return to the same areas once new vegetation is established. And construction app, activities have ceased, some of these sp, species are also capable of coexisting in a man-made environment. Once landscaping plants have been installed. Destruction and degre, that degradation of site, sign, scenic historic features. Based upon NJDEP GeoWeb data, there are no scenic or historic features on adjacent. To, on or adjacent to the subject property, there are no adverse of impacts aren't, are anticipated. Air quality degre, degradation during the project's construction stages. Local air quality may be temporarily affected by the emissions from construction equipment, automobiles used by workmen. Fug, fug, fugitive dust and delivery vehicles to the site. Uh, the effect will be minimum though, as emissions will not be excessive in dispersal, dispersion of carbon monoxide in the atmosphere is rapid. Upon completion of the project, the site is expected to return to pre-development conditions. Noise levels, an increase in trucking activity may be anticipated upon commencement of construction. Phase of the proposed project, however significant adverse impacts would not be expected to migrate to off-site receptors as a result of proposed project. Since the area is not densely populated, the New Jersey Noise Control Code. Provides standards for guidelines applicable to potential community impacts from such projects. No noticeable off-site impacts are anticipated. Uh, at conclusion, the, the development of the project will be accomplished according to all local county and state regulations. Governing the en, engineering environmental practices associated with projects of this nature. And in a, following that up, we also had unenvoyable. Impacts. Which I also had here somewhere. Unavoidable impact. Unavoidable impacts, vegetation and habitat loss, one, the majority of the site is currently cleared of vegetation. The landscape plan will provide seating mixture for ground cover and provide trees and shrubs. Air pollution, once completed, the principal air pollut generated by a project would be carbon monoxide and hydrocarbon from vehicles. Assessing the site, based upon published regional indicators, a conclusion can be drawn that overall air quality is good. And no irreversible impacts aren't anticipated from the prod, proposed project. Water pollution, the proposed project will be supplied by a private well and septic system, the stormwater runoff will be recharged on site. There are no anticipated water pollution, which would be generated by proposed site improvements. Geological features, there are no geolod, geological features on the site that are considered to be unique. No impact is expected to important geological features. Topographic features, topographic elevations on a site or, site are in a range of five percent, five percent range. No steep slopes will be created by the development of the site, the site will be regraded to provide positive drainage. That will direct stormwater runoff to the recharge basins or underground recharge systems. The, no adverse pa, impacts are projected to occur with respect to topography. Traffic impacts, they will be addressed by our traffic engineer. That concludes the planner's comments. Uh, we also have comments from the tree specialists. And it said landscaping plan should break up long buildings and screen parking service. Which we, we, we provided with the new design, you want to go back to exhibit A four landscape? Then I think it is. Nope, that's bank parking, I, I, oh, that's A, that's A three, thank you. Um. Then landscaping plan should break up long buildings and screen parking, and we, we provided that. Twenty-five foot buffer should be provided um for buildings of. For the buildings of this size, fifteen thousand square feet or less, and that, the twenty-five foot buffer has been provided all the way around the perimeter.
So Rich, is there anything that we could not comply with?
No, I, all, everything that's in his, his letter has been, has been complied with. Notes have been added, plantings have been changed, buffers have been added, and tree protection fencing has been labeled as requested.
Just it was her letter.
Fire officials comments? Um.
Same thing.
Same thing. He, he asked for seven hu, fire hydrants, where's the four hundred, forty thousand gallon um tank gonna be for fire?
Did we comply with all the comments in the fire report?
All, all the, all the comments in his report were replied, were, were complied with and, and put on the plans.
In, including adding the six fire hydrants that he requested?
Yes. Uh, that was completed.
Did you go through the board engineers' report?
Next.
Okay, just tell us what the.
Um.
Couldn't address.
Try to summarize quickly. Um. Lot of the things, again, we have provided, um, like turning radio was a, at, was inadequate separately. Loading areas provided with grading drainage comply with the ordinance. There was a comment about a retaining wall, but that will be taken off the drawing, that, I think it was, I think it was less than a foot high. I don't think that's technically a retaining wall, uh, cottonfield calculations will be provided. Um, the treatment devices I talked about, we're gonna use, we've changed the treatment devices for the recharge trench to uh Kraken Filter. Which is a new, is a newly approved DEP uh green infrastructure uh treatment. And uh, it hasn't, it, it just received its approvals and I just received the design information on it, so this is gonna be the first time we get to try it. A lot of other things we're, we're taking care of, lighting and landscaping, the buffers provided, solid wastes is on there. Site signage is not proposed. Uh, the same design uh waivers. Pertain entrance and exit drive length, parking in the front yard, screen buffering, that's been taken care of. And the number of two-way driveways been taken care of. Technical, the, technical revisions, last part of the letter. Um, we did not provide the roadway design yet, um. We, we are waiting on both uh preliminary design approvals. So that we knew that our driveways were gonna be where they're located and comments back from the county, which we have not received yet. Uh, the site lighting has been updated, septic details have been provided uh as of today. I think that plan was put together and that, we previously showed that as exhibit. A seven, so that has some details to it with, with some, some volumes and some flows. And some, a location showing that on the plan, that, that might. That, that will change grading just a little bit, especially if we move the buildings back a little bit. The islands have been added, um. It, it was requested for grading easements and or utility easements and it's all the same lot, I don't believe that's required. When it's, when it's this, all, when ownership. Uh, lighting, light pole footing has been changed, trash storage, curb line, it's all the same. We've, we've complied with the, with all the uh requirements in the technical review letter and um. C is outside, agencies were quoted, I don't know what D is, or the D is technical revisions. So um, any questions about any of those um comments? I can, I can a, answer, but all the technical revisions uh were, were looked at and evaluated and we don't have any problem providing them.
I think that concludes his direct testimony.
The, the public's questions will take place following all the testimony. So keep notes and then you'll be able to ask questions, thank you. You will be able to ask questions specifically to the people who give testimony. So when, when the public forum section comes, you can ask questions of this gentleman and the other people who are giving testimony. Thank you. I believe that the attorney already said how many testimonies there are, however, we have planner, architect. Uh, traffic, that's it, three, there are three, so. Keep your notes so that you'll be able to ask questions of the appropriate people when the time comes, thank you. Please, again, this is being recorded, please. You cannot be speaking out, if you need to carry on conversations, you can go out to the hallway. You will have an opportunity all the time you need to ask questions when the time comes at the end of the testimony. Thank you.
Okay, at this time I'd like to call up our traffic engineer, John Ray.
It, the, the committee can ask questions and, and they will be asking questions. So that you'll be able to hear what the committee asks and that may answer your question. Mr. Ray. Michael.
Questions for you, young man. Um, I'm the chairman of the environmental commission, on the twenty-second of November, we sent you a letter. Very simple question about the septic field. No response. Whatsoever. Okay, so. I, I got your answer today, but I'm going to answer you with the protocol which will, will, will happen in the future. If I do not get a response in thirty days for an RFI. I send a letter to planning and zoning and we pull your application. So you're on a courtesy tonight. Okay? You, you need to respond to the correspondence. It's just the environmental commission, but. Okay, thank you.
Not actually sure we got it because I don't have a copy of them.
Anyone else?
Uh, hang, hang on, what's it, uh, Rochelle Bro- uh, Brosfeld?
Yeah, she's at your office, Rochelle?
Yes. Okay, that's the phone call you need to make after the meeting.
Mr. Fleming.
Couple of questions, you did answer one, I just want to make sure, this is to remain a single lot under a single owner with one point of contact? It's not going to be um subdivided later?
No.
Okay, um, can we interconnect? Each of the parking lots with grass blocking curb cuts?
Yeah.
There's no, there's no grass locks placed there right now.
I understand that, I'm asking for them.
But there are curb openings right now, we can place blocks there.
Okay, in the back, so it's straight in from, so the trucks can go straight across?
Yes.
Thank you.
They go straight across.
Um, I'm not done. I, by some of this might be for the architects, can you, um, but I'll try and stay on yours. Um, will you be willing to place no parking signs along the entire property line of Farmingdale Road and Fister Road? Was that a yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And. You said you, you did um reference a cistern um required, requested by the fire official.
Yeah.
Is that one cistern for the property or one cistern per building?
It's one cistern per property, for the whole property.
Okay, and where is it?
It's on the uh, it on the corner of. Farmingdale and Fister.
Okay, is it piped to the buildings or is it piped to the hydrants or both?
Yes.
Yes, what?
It's piped to both.
To both, okay, and are there pumps for us?
Yes.
Okay, and the capacity of the pumps?
Is.
The capacity of the pumps?
Oh, I don't, I don't know that yet, because I don't know the fire um, fire um. Pressure that they need for the buildings, hasn't been, hasn't been worked out yet.
And are the buildings sprinkled, that, that might be an architectural problem, uh, question?
Yes.
Yes, they are?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Harry.
Yeah, you had a, you mentioned something about noise. Um, is there going to be? Hear me now? Light show. About noise. Um. Is there going to be any external recreation going on? Um, you know, in the parking lots, rather, I guess people live across the street there, they're familiar with the area. Um. So have you taken any consideration that if the, the schools let out, people at lunchtime, people are playing, whatever, that, that noise is taken into consideration? Or is everybody never going to come out of the building, they're going to be locked in all day and that's it?
I, I have, I guess I'd have to refer to traffic, I don't know what the volume is going to be coming in, in and out of there and what. What's going to happen during the day as far as traffic?
I would say that's operations, that's under operations.
When, when they'll be coming with buses to and from?
No, it's when, when young people are outside.
Oh, outside playing?
Outside playing. Uh, during the school day, how much exterior time is spent where young people may be making noise?
Mentioned the break.
Please add that to your testimony later.
Yeah, the break, is that, is that the recreation break?
Yeah.
Um, there, yeah, I guess that's. I, I've referenced it in my testimony as far as a break goes, I guess that would, that's what the, that's what the children get. Um, or the kids get during the day for, for exercise. Remember what that was off the top of my head, it was one forty-five to two thirty, I think. Yep, the break is from one forty-five to two thirty. That's when they'd be out, outside or inside, there's a recreation area inside if it, if it's raining.
And what is the activity that's going to take place outside during that um forty-five minutes? Are there basketball courts?
No, they're, they play catch, they play kickball, they play soccer, they play, they throw the football around, things like that. There's no basketball courts. It's just an open recreation.
It's an open field.
Open field.
No paving.
No, no paving.
You'll be able to ask questions of the same gentleman when the time comes if you want more specific answers.
Just so everybody is clear, right, because I, I hear a little, you know, a lot of hemming and hawing in the background and mumbling and everything like that, but a, a board. Goes by what's called the Robert rules of conduct, what that does, that allows the applicant to put their experts up, whether they have one. Or seven or whatever it is, that gives them the chance to put their affirmative testimony on the record. After that, what happens is that the general public is able to ask questions of those experts about whatever they want. It has to be relevant to testimony that, that the expert put on, but they can go to whatever they want, whatever they want to ask that expert. So I, I know a lot of you have questions, there's a lot of stuff that's going on, but I ask that everybody just remain quiet. We have two court scenographers here and it's very, very, very difficult for them to type. While everybody's speaking in the background, while trying to get the testimony of the per, of the person they're trying to type down on the record. So just as a matter of courtesy, politeness, if you just hold your questions until the portion of the Robert rules of, of conduct, that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Any other questions for this?
I, you say the hours of operation will be?
Seven fifteen AM to seven thirty PM.
But the, the last, I've read in your documentation, the last bus will leave at four o'clock.
Buses will be gone by four o'clock.
So what will be happening between?
It's still open for teachers and employees and maintenance and maintenance workers.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Uh, and an, another question then. These buildings, all three, will only be used as schools, they will not be held, no meetings will be held, no. Other activities other than schools. Correct?
Correct.
And I, I have a question of directly to the, um, I guess if you look at it to the left. There, I guess that's to the west, there's a long established kennel, there's been there a long time, is there sufficient um buffering between? Your property and the kennel, they're not going to disturb those animals, okay, they've been there a long time, the gentleman that runs it. Has been in the business a long time, he raises quality animals.
Yeah.
They should not disturb what's going on in his area.
Yeah, there, there's thirty feet of undisturbed trees along that property line.
And that meets the ordinance requirement.
I understand, it might meet the requirement, it's actually do the job, don't know. You're talking a kennel, it's different, not like another home, or it's not like a, a business or garage or something there, these are animals here, it's like putting. Horses or something next to it, they could be very concerned as far as their behavior, okay?
Any other questions from the committee?
I guess I have a, another question, um. On your plans, there's no uh provisions for building maintenance. And no janitorial supply storage areas are indicated. Um, how and, how and will these buildings be maintained?
We'll have the architect uh address that, they may be on the plans, I, I'm not sure, but let's have the architect address that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ma- madam chair.
Yeah, i- if, if the board professionals have any questions, if they could ask a couple.
Um. Going back to the um, uh, water service, I got, I guess we have the fire protection um down this forty thousand gallon cistern. And I guess that's going to be owned and maintained by the property owner?
Yes.
Um, it's going to be monitored at all? The concern is we hook up to this thing that's empty.
It, yeah, it has to be, or fire, a fire would, it would fail, so there has to be an inspection going along with it, just like your fire hydrants in your building.
Um, water service or, or potable water service, I can't find a well on this drawing.
There. One's there. One's there. One's there, one, they're right next to the building for right now. And the, the final design of the wells, it may only need, we only may need it two, depending on the. The DEP uh review of it and the second of all, the, the tests for the wells.
But, but those, those wells aren't on the drawings that.
Right, this is all, that whole plan is new.
Okay, so, so the plan that you're referring to hasn't been submitted for review by?
Right, right, it's an exhibit.
That's the reason we don't know where it is.
Right, right.
Um. I, I think the exhibit was prepared to address some of the questions in your reports that we just got on the twenty-second.
Um, the, the septic system and the waste water treatment, you indicated that there was going to be some type of chemical. Treatment or chemicals added to the wastewater before it's put into the disposal field?
Right, but that's what the filter house will, will be for, the, the housing that, that, that's there.
The, the, the.
The pretreatment.
The housing, how big is this housing?
That's thirty by forty.
Also not shown on the plans.
Yeah, well, it's shown on this plan.
On the exhibit. Um, is there going to be a, uh, it'll be um DEP regulated and permitted, will it be, have to be a licensed operator?
No.
You know, licensed operator?
No.
Um, the outdoor recreation, which I guess is to the, um, I'll say to the west or behind all the buildings. And just basically an open field, including over the septic system?
Okay.
Uh, the recreation area, um, that I'm just really hearing about for the first time tonight, because it really wasn't labeled on the plans. But the big grass area behind the schools that also have the um, the wastewater disposal, the waste, wastewater disposal field. That's just going to be wide open for kids to play.
Right.
Over the septic system too.
Well, it'll be above the septic system and below the septic system areas, they'll be open to recreation, there'll be open lawn areas. That, that whole septic system area will be fenced off.
Um.
And, and I, I misspoke that. There will be an operator for that building. That will have to, that will have to come in and monitor that.
For a licensed operator?
Yes.
For the septic system?
Yeah.
Not just for that one building or the whole septic system, which services all three buildings?
Yes.
Um. The recreation area, the disposal field area is going to be fenced, how about the rest of the recreation area?
There was, there was no proposed fence for recreation areas, other than keeping the kids from getting involved with the septic system and, and that. Whole building area.
Wouldn't it be a good idea to have, say, the whole rec area fenced, so the kids don't go wandering offsite?
Well, it's going to be heavily wooded and.
Uh, the applicants indicated to me that that's fine, we'll put a fence around the perimeter.
Um. There was an indication that there's no security guards?
No security guards as of, as of right now.
Don't you think that's a good idea?
Ask the operator.
Okay, um. It. Um, and deliveries, there's going to be one delivery a day in a, in a box truck?
Right.
How does the food get there?
They bring it.
So there'd be more than one delivery?
It's not, it's not, it's not a kitchen, it's just a place that you could actually warm up your food if you wanted to.
How does the food get there?
The, people are bringing their food, I think, I don't think it's a catered issue, you'll have to ask the applicant that also.
So there could be more than one delivery a day?
If there's food coming, it could be more than one delivery a day.
I, I believe it's one, well, I'm just going off of, by a shock off, it's one in the morning and then one at lunchtime. It all comes in the warming kitchens um trays and it goes to the warming kitchen, but I don't want to testify, I do have an architect. Who did go through the orthodox school system, so he'll be much more familiar with how all that works.
Um, the, the driveway connections to Fister Road, I'm counting five right now?
Four.
Two, three. I'm counting five.
Five, yes, I can't count.
Um, any thought on, you know, reducing them or consolidating them to either one or two, the service, you know, the, the schools versus five?
I didn't look at it, but we could look at it.
I'm just, you know, the ordinance says, you know, one per, you know, one, two-way or two.
Well, I think when they, when they made it all, one in and out for each school. That's, that's how they, that, that's how they ended up with that design.
And keeping the drive aisles close to the school loading areas, so it would make a lot of sense. But, you know, we can, if you, you know, want to take a look at it, you have a recommendation, we can certainly consider it, but I think the way it's set forth now. It's probably the safest way, coming in and out separately between each of the schools.
Um, the um, the roof area, that'll connect to the stormwater system as well?
Yes, it will, it will be tied directly to the storm system.
That's all for now.
Yes, I have a question, uh, we're going back to security and you decided to wait in security in today's days, but I guess that can be looked at. You have security cameras in there. And will they be accessed by our police department if needed?
Well, I think the security camera will be the architect's question.
I definitely want that answered, thank you.
Sure.
I, I have one more question, please, um, nurses, I see nurses offices on the plan, will there be ner- nurses stationed in each of the buildings?
Not a psych question, you'll have to ask the applicant.
The answer's going to be yes.
Okay, I, I heard a number of, and I may be mistaken, forty thousand for a tank fire related and, but there's a seven thousand gallon cistern. Which, we're going with the cistern? Sir, are, are you putting a, a seven thousand gallon cistern on?
Forty, forty thousand gallon, yeah.
Okay. Um. You said it would be monitored, you're going to monitor it as part of your fire suppression network, correct?
Correct, that would.
Okay. So you're not relying upon Jackson Fire Department to come out once a month and check?
No.
Okay, just so we're clear, thank you.
I got, I got a question, whole thing, I probably looked at it, Mr. Fleming. Who monitors it, I mean, they're supposed to be in charge, that's great, all the faith in the world. You get out there, ain't no water, what do you do? Now, that's what I'm saying, is there any inspection annually by the police?
Annually by their insurance company? So it would have at least two.
That's why I wanted to get to some sort of annual inspections, thank you.
We bet, uh, Mr. Peters.
Madam Chair. If I might. Um. Miss Jennings, I'm going to make reference to my March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three report, just so the record's clear. On the first page, you talked about one floor area, the engineer talked about a two-story building, just for the record, when your architect gets up. All three are two-story buildings with basements, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Um, on page. Eight of our report under. Traffic circulation, um, we asked for some testimony about the frontage improvements, Farmingdale and Fister. Um, and if any offsite improvements were necessary.
Think we're going to have the traffic engineer address that?
He's going to testify what's going to end up on the site civil plans? I'm, I'm okay with it, but just.
I can, I can testify, if it's, if it's safe, so go ahead.
I'm asking what the improvements for the road frontage are.
There, there are no improvements as of yet because of the driveways being proposed and need, need an, an approval first before we can go forward. Here, as, as an example, we just talked about going to one co- combined driveway instead of two. So that changes the design of the road out in front, all the grades, all the profiles, everything, so it's, it's. So that changes the design of the road out in front, all the grades, all the profiles, everything. So it's it's best to wait for your preliminary approvals in place.
Absolutely not.
So and then the county road, and the county road, we already submitted to them with cross-sections, and they have not gotten back to us yet.
So you can't tell us how wide Fister Road is going to be?
It's it's the same width as it was, but if you if it's something that you want different, you got to tell me now.
No, sir, respectfully, you said you went through my report, you obviously did, because I asked for testimony about the frontage improvements, and we didn't get any. So respectfully, I'm asking you simply to give the testimony that you said you were going to do.
We did not do frontage improvements yet.
Thank you. As it relates to the cistern, I don't know if this witness will answer or not, is this going to be considered an accessory structure on the site?
It's underground.
So that makes it not accessory? Again, if you want to ask your planner to testify, the thirty by forty.
It's really a utility. It's a utility. And something that's necessary, it's underground, so it's not like it's going to be a bulk standard or setback or anything like that.
We had an application last week where we had equipment commensurate with things that were underground, that were above ground, that were considered accessory?
They were above ground.
Because if they're considered accessory, it's in the front yard.
And it's below ground.
Are the pumps going to be above, below ground? That'll be difficult.
The only pump shown on the detail, the only pump shown on the detail is inside the building. They don't show one for the where the fire hydrant would be. So it could be above ground somewhere.
Thank you. So for the record, the cistern itself will get filled by the wells that are on site? It's not expected that the town's going to be responsible to fill the cisterns?
Right, right.
Thank you. The sanitary sewer septic system design, in point of fact, this ends up being what's referred to as a wastewater treatment plant or a package plant, correct?
Correct.
So that's the reason you need a licensed operator. I apologize, you may have pointed it out, could you just show me where this thirty by forty building is on this plan?
There it goes. It's it's the dark building right next to the field, the six units there is are the field, and the building, the the square to the right of the to the east of the field with the four chambers in it is the building.
And that's only thirty by forty?
Thirty by forty, yes.
Okay, because that, in fact, would be an accessory building. We'd need to make sure that the setback requirements for that are being met. I'd simply ask your planner to give us some testimony, because obviously, that building isn't on any of the plans that, Mr. Clear, I had an opportunity to review yet. Okay, thank you. I have nothing additional this time.
Okay, so we get this fire pump situation squared away. Your your testimony to us is that there are three buildings, three pumps, and three pumps, one in each basin. That's for the fire suppression system, correct?
Correct.
Okay, outside of that, there's another pump driving cistern to feed the buildings, correct?
Yes.
Okay, have we considered an underground vault? It's underground with pumping it out of sight, out of mind, out of freezing? And it might even be out of the accessory structure nonsense?
We'll look into that, thank you.
Mr. Pressy.
This may be, I don't know who the professionals or the attorney, but I have a real problem in my own, just, and I'm only one person, I want to continue. I only one person, one opinion, and I'm having a small problem with this. There's a ten-day rule where our professionals are supposed to have all the paperwork, and they ain't got it today.
Well, we only got the reports on March twenty-second, and so this is just an exhibit. And the ten-day rule is actually for site plan applications and stuff, not for exhibits. So it's just an exhibit trying to address their questions. I mean, it's not, you'll get full engineered plans later, but.
Later, we're supposed to vote on it before we get them?
We won't. I doubt we're going to get through the meeting in one night, Mr. Pressy.
My opinion, we should pull the application, our professionals have it, that's my opinion.
Well, I I don't, legally, we have done nothing wrong. I would not pull an application that's fully conforming.
You know, it it might be a good idea to listen tonight. We have people here, professionals here, we're all here. Let's listen to what has to be said, then we can make that decision when it comes time to vote. Let's listen to the professionals here, where you're all here tonight. This is the opportunity to hear, doesn't mean we have to move forward rapidly, we can we can show patience, but we have a motion on the.
I mean, that's all true, the people are here tonight. But the people aren't getting the whole story neither, because our professionals don't have the whole story either, and we ain't got the whole story either. So what's the sense in going through it with the people when they're not getting full information?
All right, I just have to put my my legal speak on the record. So given the fact that this was publicly noticed, and this hearing is devoted to this application, and there are other experts that are here that could possibly remediate some of the questions that that they're being thrown around. Mrs. Jennings should be allowed at least to put her experts on the record, because if there are more questions that need to be answered and like that, we can have that fleshed out tonight, today, so that those questions don't have to come at a following hearing if need be. So that would be what I would legally advise.
But there is a motion on the floor, and it should be voted on. So it's been made and seconded. We'll call for a roll call, please.
Mr. Pressy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein? Mr. Bernstein? Mr. Flabbing? Mr. Herring? Mr. Riker? Mr. Solomon?
No, but I will say this. If we don't start getting some straight answers and start getting some straight testimony, this motion will come up again.
And your answer is?
Done.
Dr. Campbell?
No.
Six noes, one yes?
Two yeses.
Two yeses, I'm sorry.
So we will continue this evening with the testimony. It makes more sense to listen so that some of these questions that we're posing tonight, we know this won't end tonight. So we will be able to, the professionals on the applicant's side will be able to make some adjustments based on all these very good questions that are coming from this board, and I'm sure will come from the public as well. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call up Mr. Ray.
Is Mr. Peters done? Yes. Please state your full name for the record.
John Ray, R E A.
You swear to say the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could, John, for the benefit of the board, give your background and qualifications.
I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New York, New Jersey and New York. Forget where I am sometimes, doing this too long. My field of specialty is traffic engineering. I have a total of forty-eight years' experience in the traffic engineering field. I'm a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates, fourteen thirty-one Lakewood Road, Manasquan, New Jersey. Undergraduate degree from NJIT in civil engineering in nineteen seventy-four. Master's degree in transportation engineering from NYU in nineteen seventy-eight, and I appeared before this board as recently as, I think, a week ago on a similar application for a much larger school campus.
Board accept his qualifications? Thank you. John, just for the record, your office prepared a traffic impact statement originally dated September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and I believe you further revised it in February of twenty twenty-three?
That is correct.
And just for the record, you've also visited the site and the area around the site?
On several occasions, yes.
Okay, and you've conducted some peak hour traffic counts consistent with the high schools in the area?
Yes.
All right, if you could describe the existing site conditions and the impact that the schools will have on the surrounding road system?
Okay, and we were also provided with a statement of operations by the applicant in order to assist us in preparing the traffic impact analysis. The subject property is located on the northwest corner of Farmingdale Road and Fister Road. Fister Road is a local municipal roadway under the jurisdiction of Jackson Township. Farmingdale Road is an east-west Ocean County collector roadway, and it runs generally parallel to Interstate one ninety-five, a little bit north of the interstate. So it's located on the northwest corner of those two roadways. Peak hour traffic counts were conducted at the intersection of Fister and Farmingdale Road, as well as New Prospect Road, which is a collector roadway which intersects Farmingdale Road just to the east of Fister Road. Those two intersections were counted the second week in September twenty twenty-two, when schools were open, and there were no detours, accidents, or anything that would affect routine peak hour traffic flow in the area. An automatic traffic recorder, a road tube, was also placed across Farmingdale Road and counted the traffic on Farmingdale Road on an hourly basis for a period of one week. That was the third week of September twenty twenty-two. And that was basically used to confirm that we had the right peak hours when we did our manual turning movement counts, and the automatic traffic recorder did confirm that we counted the correct peak hours at the two intersections I just previously mentioned. Estimates of traffic to be generated by the school were made after reviewing the statement of operations. There are going to be a total of five hundred and twenty-two students. There are going to be high schools, but the high school students will not be allowed to drive. There will be fifteen staff members at each school, so that's a total of forty-five staff members. There probably will be at least two deliveries per day, based on the testimony that I just heard, one for food certainly. And so that needs to be included in traffic generation estimates. There will also be school buses that will take the students, the majority, overwhelming majority of the students to the school. We anticipate that ninety percent of the school students will be bused to the site with the possibility of about ten percent of the students being dropped off by parents. We went through this at the last hearing last week. The estimates range from five to ten percent. Ten percent's probably a little bit on the high end as far as parents dropping off to children. So we prepared those estimates of traffic generation during the morning and afternoon peak hours. And I want to mention something that I think is significant, because it affects the traffic study for this application, which is for a high school. The hours of operation are going to be, it school's going to start at seven thirty in the morning, if I'm not mistaken. So the peak hour in the morning between seven and eight is the critical peak hour for analysis. In the afternoon, the peak hour in this area occurs between let me make sure I get the right peak hour. The peak hour occurs between three thirty and four thirty P M in this area. And the schools will not be letting out at three thirty to four thirty P M. As you've heard the testimony before, the school is going to be discharging the students at seven thirty in the evening. What I, my statement of operations says seven thirty.
Again, everybody can please calm down.
Please.
Well, I have to tell you something. If my statement of operations is incorrect, I have to make modifications to the traffic study. There's no point in me going any further this evening.
Ladies and gentlemen, that some of us have to ask about this from this gentleman. Please be quiet. We are being recorded. I have a question, Mr. Ray.
Yes.
That has nothing to do with your statement of operations hours, although we did hear testimony earlier that school will be letting out between three thirty and four thirty, and the staff will be remaining. So my biggest concern with this entire project is that very difficult dogleg that exists between New Prospect, the left turn onto Farmingdale, and the right turn onto Fister. That that is going to be very, very difficult with the long lines of busing, because most of the buses, I will assume my son had a very good friend there, and I drove that road for eight years, dropping him off and picking him up, and that is a very difficult dogleg there, and most of the traffic will be coming from New Prospect, because that's Jackson, down the street is Owl.
Correct.
So so what what are you thinking of to ameliorate that issue?
One thing that's already on the plans that I've recommended to my client and the county, we've discussed this with the county, we will be installing widening, I don't want to blind anybody with the laser. We will be widening Farmingdale Road to provide for, and this isn't strong enough, a left turn lane from eastbound Farmingdale Road onto Fister to assist the school buses and school traffic. There will be a dedicated left turn lane on eastbound Farmingdale Road, turning onto Fister. We've discussed that with the county. That's on the plans, and that will be done.
Is there any consideration of signaling?
At this juncture, based on the traffic volumes, there's no need for signalization. We have A or B levels of service at the site driveways and at those two offsite intersections.
How how many school buses are we talking about?
Probably three for each school, so a total of nine. So assuming each bus holds forty-five to fifty students.
Ladies and gentlemen, your background noise interferes with the recording, please. Mr. Pressy?
I have a question, sorry. Just what you said about the left turn lane, I just want to make clear, be the other property, the only property being given up, be the owner's property, not the residence property?
I don't know that, I don't know that yet, Mr. Pressy. We have to take a look at the available right-of-way along Farmingdale Road, see what what the county right-of-way is, but we need to do whatever we need to do in order to provide for a dedicated left turn lane that's of the right dimension, the right width, the right length. It's got to be done, whether there's property acquisition or not. It's got to be done to proper traffic engineering standards.
Questions from the board? Mr. Harry?
Let me turn my mic back on. Two things. One is when you come down New Prospect, they talk about that dogleg, at the very bottom of that road to Farmingdale. People are allowed to put whatever vegetation they want on their property, but because of what people on the right have on their thing, you have to actually go into the road, be able to see if there's anybody coming down that road. Okay, so and a short distance to the left is where Fister is. The other thing is, once you, if you come out of Fister and you make a right going west, the only like escape hatch is at the very end of the road. Okay, Jacksonville's Road, and if you ever travel down there right now, it's a real connector. And I live in that basic area. Coming down there, I had to like go around and take a dirt road around to get around that, because I couldn't get out into traffic. And that's not even at a peak time. So if you if you're going to direct traffic that way, it's going to be backed up for quite a ways.
Well, we're not going to, we're not going to direct traffic in any one particular, you know, direction. It's going to come from the directions where the students live. And and we assume. direction. It's going to come from the directions where the students live, and we assumed most of the traffic would probably be coming up New Prospect, 40% of it, and then 30% in either direction on Farmingdale. But I understand your concern, and what I would tell you, having once been a municipal traffic engineer for a large municipality in New York for 10 years, if somebody has vegetation or something in the site triangle, it's creating a site distance problem and a safety issue. The Public Works Department ought to go out there and talk to the homeowner and have it trimmed. If it's creating a safety issue today, before any traffic from the school gets generated, it should be taken care of. Okay.
Questions on the board?
John, you said that there's going to be a road widening.
Yes.
And the solar vision lane. When did you become aware of this need? When, the last time you met with the county?
Yes.
About how long ago was that?
My partner was working on it. He met with the county, so I'm not sure exactly what the timeframe was, but the discussion of the dedicated left turn lane came up. We agreed to do it right away.
All right, because I'm kind of confused, because the engineer didn't have any knowledge of it. He stated specifically, the road width is the road width.
I think he was talking about Fister, but I could stand corrected.
Yeah, I was having a hard time understanding that, because you seem to be very aware of it, which you normally are, and I can't figure this out, so.
No, we will be widening Farmingdale, which is a county road. We've discussed that with the county. We need the left turn lane. We will be installing the left turn lane.
Okay, thank you, as always.
Our professionals?
Mr. Ray, just real quick, the five driveway connections to Fister, Fister Road, wouldn't it be better designed to, like, consolidate them into less than a number?
I think you're correct, Doug, and I think a plan that I saw, and maybe it's not, you know, what's been testified to tonight, we're going to, for at least school buildings B and C, which have two driveways each, we're going to bifurcate them and make them directional, so that one will be an entrance only and one will be an exit only, so that we'll provide that, you know, separation. Those driveways won't be two-way driveways. One will be an entrance, one will be an exit. Now, with respect to school A, because it's only got one driveway on Fister, I think that probably has to remain a two-way driveway, but we can look at that as well, too, because we do have a, an entrance only from Farmingdale. So we may be able to do something with school A as well.
And is there any road improvements proposed for Fister beyond the curbs in the sidewalks? Pavement widening?
I would assume, and I haven't seen a plan that shows this, that Fister would have to be widened at least to what the minimum township standard is for our half section of the road, and that would be a minimum. We'd have to make sure we have the turning radius for the buses to get in and out.
And emergency equipment.
Yes, and Mr. Fleming's stuff. Yes. That will have to be done. Mr. Fleming and Mr. Clea asked all the good questions, so I don't have any.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ray, and I agree with you. You're in between a rock and a hard place, so.
I always am.
Yes.
That's why, that's why I'm gray now, or white, or whatever the heck it is.
Started out with darker hair at the beginning of this meeting.
And you remember that. That's, I do, I looked at the statement of operations again, and I do believe the 7:30 dismissal hour is the correct hour, so the traffic study would not have to be modified. If I am correct, that the school will be dismissed at 7:30. But I'm going to let somebody else answer that question.
Mr. Ray?
Mr. Ray, one more?
Yes.
Just for clarification, because I was asked this before the meeting, I know you make a practice of it and how you do your studies. Can you explain that, when you do a study that all approve sites that may not be built and so forth?
Oh, yes.
Can you explain how that's done?
Sure.
So you don't understand, you're not just looking at the.
What Mr. Bressi is indicating is that when we do our traffic studies, and the county makes us do this, just so the public is aware, the county makes us look at a 10-year horizon in the future for every Ocean County Planning Board analysis. So what we have to do is we have to look at other projects that may be in the area that will contribute traffic within that 10-year timeframe, and we also have to look at the NJDOT's background traffic growth rates for the area, and we've done both of those things in this instance. And as the board members may know, and I'm sure the public knows, there's a large apartment complex under construction down on New Prospect to the south of us. That traffic study has been reviewed, and we've added that traffic into the 10-year projections. So we have looked at a 10-year horizon in the future.
Thank you. I know you do that all the time, but I think the public needs to.
Thank you, Mr. Bressi. Yes.
Just so my notes are clear, the hours of operation are 7:30 to 7:00 p.m.
Well, we, can we take a five-minute break? We want to clarify that.
That's what I'm saying. I just wanted to make sure that.
My statement of operations says the school will be dismissed at 7:30, and that's what I use in my report.
Okay, we'll get confirmation.
And I'd like confirmation on that for 12 months. Are the summer hours the same as the, as the nine-month hours?
Got it. We'll find that out. Thank you.
I think it would be a good opportunity to take a break. Thank you. Five minutes, please.
And why Mr. Ray is still sitting to my left. Mr. Ray was correct that the students do go and stay at the school till 7:30, so the buses will be picking them up at that time to bring them home. With respect to the second question that you asked, school gear is a 10-month school year. The boys follow the calendar, so that they're off in April for Passover, whenever that lands. They're off in August, and then they're off for all the holidays in the fall. So it works out to be a 10-month school year, so it'll be the same hours for the 10 months that they're in session. So no summer camp, though.
Thank you.
Basically, it's a full calendar year.
The school runs for a full calendar year with different vacations.
Okay, so since Mr. Ray was correct, we decided we would let him finish his testimony this evening, because he says he doesn't have too much to go, and he'd like to finish tonight if he could.
Point I was going to make with the 7:30 dismissal is that the traffic volumes on Farmingdale Road between 7:00 and 8:00 o'clock in the evening are approximately 40 to 50% lower than they are during the traditional commuter peak hours between 4:00 and 5:00. So that was factored into the study. So the study is correct. I had the right hours of operation. I thought I did, but I wasn't certain there for one minute. The other thing I wanted to touch upon was, and I think Anthony put the exhibit up on the board, with respect to the left turn lane on Farmingdale Road, I just communicated with our site engineer, and we will not need any private right-of-way from any other landowner. It will all be done on our side of the road or within the county right-of-way. And outside of that, I just wanted to say, now that I know I had the right school hours, the traffic study showed that the intersections that we studied had adequate capacity to handle the traffic from the schools, operate at acceptable levels of service. We have level of service B, as in void conditions, at all of our site driveways and at the two off-site intersections. So we have the capacity to handle this traffic right now without the assistance of a traffic signal.
If you could, John, just for the benefit of the audience, just describe what a level of service B means.
Yeah, for the benefit of the audience, traffic engineers use a term called level of service in order to quantify how well an intersection is operating at. Levels of service range from A, which is the highest or best attainable level of service, to F, which is the lowest. Generally speaking, any intersection that's operating at level of service E or better is considered to be operating acceptably. Once you get into a level of service F condition, then you got to look at mitigation. Could be a traffic signal, it could be a road widening, a left turn lane, things of that nature. But the levels of service for the intersections I just mentioned are going to be level of service B or better for the site driveways and for the off-site intersections, and level of service B essentially relates to pretty minimal delay for traffic to enter those roadways.
Okay, and then with respect to the site itself, the access and the loading and site circulation generally, do you find those acceptable?
Everything is acceptable. The one thing I did want to, at least have an opinion on, because this came up at the hearing last week for the other application, I would recommend that, you know, we landbank those parking spaces that are along the frontages of Fister and Farmingdale. I don't think we're going to need those parking spaces. As I've indicated in my testimony, we're going to have 45 staff members. We will occasionally have visitors and a parent that may have to park and go into the, one of the schools, but we don't need the 230-some-odd parking spaces. I believe the board should entertain the applicant's offer of landbanking the spaces that are along the Fister Road and the Farmingdale Road frontages.
Mr. Ray, I have a question.
Yes.
On your peak hour, is that five days a week? What would be different on Friday? Do you have to account for that?
I can tell you, Mr. Bressi, I got to look at the, it's basically, it varies from. I can tell you, Mr. Bressi, I gotta look at the, it's basically, it varies from day to day. Sometimes it's 4:00 to 5:00, sometimes it's 5:00 to 6:00. Give me one second, I can check the automatic traffic counts. It's basically, on two days of the week, it's four, on Tuesday and Wednesday, the peak hour is 4:00 to 5:00. And on Monday, Thursday, and Monday and Thursday, it was 5:00 to 6:00. And on Friday, it was actually 3:00 to 4:00. But we just use the highest peak hour to do the analysis.
I have one other question, sir. Landbanking, I personally have no problem because you still have the required amount of parking space you need. Once again, enforcement on it. What's going to trigger this need?
Correct.
How do we trigger that? Again?
Well, it would be code enforcement or...
We had a similar condition of approval in the prior hearing. If we want to maybe make that part of this as well, if that would make sense.
Yeah, annually, we'd have the zoning officer or somebody designated from the township to come out and check to see if we need to have those additional spaces made, but we obviously have plenty of room on site.
Right.
Thank you. I thought I was going to have an early night when I didn't have the right hours, but I'm wrong. Oh, okay.
One more question. On page four of your report, it shows trip generation, table one. Okay, and AM it shows buses 12:00 in and 12:00 out. For PM, it shows zero. What happens? How are you going to get the...
That's because there are no buses at 3:30 to 4:30. They're going to be at 7:30 in the evening. School's going to be in session from 3:30 to 4:30.
Okay, so it's actually because I saw everything drop like a stone for that PM period. So it's going to be random buses coming?
No, it's not going to be, the buses are going to arrive at around 7:15 in the evening for the 7:30 dismissal. At 3:30 to 4:30, school's going to be in session. There will be no buses taking kids out of the schools during that hour.
We've had a change in the hours of operation.
Yeah.
The hours of operation are going to be 7:15 AM to 7:30 PM.
Correct.
There are no buses midday. However, there, I was made aware that there might be three food deliveries.
Okay.
So...
My question.
Yeah, okay. Why don't you...
With the change of statement of operations, or better, or sorry, with the more accurate statement of operations, are there going to be two meals a day or three meals a day? Do we know?
I'm going to have to punt that to my applicant. I don't know if it will be two or three.
Okay, because I would assume breakfast, lunch, and supper are not going to all be delivered. That'd be very talented to get everything on one truck once a day.
Even if it was three deliveries, the roads have the capacity, the deliveries come in vans that have racks, and the meals are pre-prepared and there's a warming kitchen. So I don't think it would be an issue anyway, even if it was up to three deliveries per day.
Court, any questions from the professionals? Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to call up the architect.
Please state your full name for the record.
My name is Naftali Gutt, G U T.
And do you attest to swear to say the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and if you could, Naftali, for the record, give the board the benefit of your background and qualifications, and make sure you keep the microphone close to your mouth so we can hear you.
I am a graduate of NJIT, the master's program, and the principal of Gutten Van, firm based in Liquid. I am licensed in New Jersey, multiple other states. I have never testified in Jackson, but I have testified in municipalities.
And your license is current today?
Yes, it is.
Would the board accept its qualifications?
Is that a architectural degree or an engineering degree?
Architectural.
Thank you. We accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, Naftali, could you just confirm that your office prepared the floor plans and elevations?
Yes, they did.
And if you could describe the proposal, and if you're going to rely on any exhibits, so we'll have them brought up for you?
Yeah, there are an exhibit with the plans, the elevations. Can we bring up the exhibit with the architecturals?
They must be after A8. Maybe they're A5? A5? It just says architectural plans from Gutten Van. They should have been with the packet of the other exhibits.
I have architectural exhibits A1 through A15 in our packet.
Yeah, that's all we want.
Yeah, those are the architectural plans, yeah. You don't have the digital copy. Well, you can look at your plans and we'll describe them.
Okay, so...
They're posted on the website, I'm told, so you guys have them digitally.
Yes.
Here they are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, as stated previously, there's a three separate...
Talk really loud.
These are three separate independent high school buildings.
So if you could just raise that up a little bit, I think you can see them better. Hello? There you go.
The top picture is the overall, bottom is A, B, and C, each building separately. Both, all these buildings are two stories plus a basement. They're all conforming as far as the height. None of them even come close to 35 limit.
So it's clear. What exhibit are we looking at right now, just for marking purposes?
The cover page of the architectural plans.
CS1?
CS1, correct. Okay, the upper floors of all the buildings contain a study hall, a dining room with a warming kitchen adjacent to the dining room in each building. Now to clarify some questions before, there is no cooking for these schools. The way they do it is that they have a third party preparing the food, and it gets trucked in, you know, in a small van usually, and then they deliver the food, either breakfast and lunch together and supper separately, or each meal separately. There is no cooking on site, hence there's only a warming kitchen for each building. Each building contains four classrooms, offices for the staff, teacher's lounge. Each floor should, contains a janitor's closet, your storage for inside and for outside maintenance. There is tutor rooms for individual learning. Each floor has a sizable bathroom. The basement of each building contains some additional offices, various rooms for extracurricular activities, such as a gym, music room, computer rooms, science labs, and robotic labs. We are proposing three different facade treatments for the three buildings. There is no apparent consistent architectural style prevalent in the adjacent neighborhood. At least that would be appropriate for a school building. So being that these are three separate buildings, these have three different parent bodies, different kids. So we want the building to be clearly identifiable for the students and for the parents, for the school buses, whoever is going to be providing the transportation. So we gave them three separate facade treatments. Building A proposed facade material is going to be red brick with base stucco. Building B's proposed facade material is going to be gray brick and gray stucco. And Building C proposed facade is going to be a darkish brownish brick with contrasting light gray stucco. And I just want to take a minute to address the security. All buildings are kept locked at all times. For students, anyone to get in, they're buzzed in. There is a roving security system that, it's like, it's a third, again, a third party that the schools hire, and they're not always on site, but they're driving around and they're also providing security. There are usually, there are cameras throughout all the buildings that are monitored by the police and by the office staff. Are there any questions?
Yes. Uh, I noticed, you know what question I'm going to ask?
About the solar panels.
I am. Will there be solar on these roofs?
There could be.
I always ask, it's a question I always ask, because we live in a new age. We're trying to preserve our environment.
So the applicants indicated they're willing to put solar panels on the roof.
Good. Gymnasiums, gyms, no lockers, no showers.
Yeah, to clarify, the gymnasiums, they're not, they're not like gymnasiums as in basketball courts. They're usually like game rooms and light, light activities. Boys usually come and they dress, dress code, white shirts, black pants, that's usually their come. They're not changing and getting all sweaty during the day, taking showers and stuff. They're just doing light activities, just airing out inside or outside and going back to class. That's why we're not proposing any locker rooms.
And that's 12 months a year, including summers?
In the summers, they, they might be, but usually it's outdoors and they're not stuffing inside in the summer. They're running around outside. And a lot of times in the summer, they, they might be going off grounds. They're not, they're not doing any heavy activities on site.
And my third question is about construction. There will be no phasing? All three buildings will be open at the same time?
Correct.
Thank you. Committee, Mr. Herron?
Yeah, one thing I noticed, looking at the plans, I didn't find on any of the floors where you have your utilities, you know, electrical room, heating, air conditioning, is it all going to be on the roof? I mean, open any new approach, but I don't see anywhere where that's there.
So the, you are correct.
Is there any other way to get out other than going up the same stairs that you went down in case of a fire or something?
Sorry, I didn't hear that. Can you repeat that?
Yeah. From the beginning?
Well, ask one question at a time. You had two questions in there.
I'll answer the first question.
To each other. First one is, where do you have your utilities? I didn't see any room that said, you know, mechanical room or something to show that there was, you know, the electrical boxes, the heating, the air conditioning, et cetera. I mean, is there air conditioning and heating and everything in the plant? You left it out?
It's in the basement. It's not, it is not showing in there. We revised it before we, this, this is the whole, actually, the older drawings. It is, it is in there in the basement. We have a utility room and a sprinkler room showing in all, on all the buildings.
We just really need to put it in the plan.
Yes, it's there now.
Right now, it looks like there's nothing, you know. And the other thing, is there any other escape routes to get out of the cellar area, the basement, other than the stairs that you came down on, in case there's a fire blocking it?
There's tons of egress as far as the stairs, and there's elevator.
There are two sets of stairs in each building.
Correct.
Campbell? The study hall is, is designed to be used while the other classrooms are being used, or they're used several times?
They're used several times. The way, the way the schools are run is that there's a time when they're all together in the study hall, and then there's times when they each go to their classroom with their rabbi. They're, they're usually not happening at the same time.
And the seats in the study hall are meant to include the seats for all the specific teachers, rabbis, and all the other people in the study hall?
Correct.
Would you consider revising your plan to give direct egress from the basement out?
When you say direct egress...
From the basement?
Maybe, maybe I should clarify, that each, each building has, has two, has two staircases that take you from the basement. It should be able to take you, at least one of them directly out.
And if the first floor is compromised, you have no way out. You need a direct egress in the basement.
Can we...
I'm going to need A8.
A8, can we, can we bring up A8? Let's see.
You have a place of assembly with no direct egress from the bottom floor.
Correct.
You got to go through the building to get out of the building.
Correct, that, that will be revised.
Okay, and now I have, I have two questions, and I'm going to show my ignorance. On page A6, what is an otzer? Top left row, just...
Oh, I'm sorry, that, that's a hidden word for a library.
Thank you, and...
Can we relabel it? Yes.
No, 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 that's fine. That's why I was, and you do your own book finding?
It's actually an activity, it's an activity that students like to use. There's a lot of books.
Every building college is asking. Thank you. You answered my question, and you will rise and serve.
Absolutely. Thank you for pointing that out.
Yes, going back to A8, please. Just in general, could you show us where you have modified it for the mechanical?
Well, it's not showing, it's not showing in, in these, these are the older ones.
Oh, I know, but I'm just saying, where would it be?
They're in the basement. In each one, I, we have, we have a room in the basement that, that has a separate room for mechanicals, separate room for a sprinkler room in each of the building. It's hard to describe where they are without seeing it, but they're in one of the peripheral rooms. And they will, they will be adequate for the basement, first floor, and, and the second floor is going to be serviced by something on the rooftop.
Thank you. Campbell? Um, just to clarify, these are designed to be boy schools, right?
Correct.
Which means that obviously, if for some reason the, the owner wants to sell them, or something goes wrong and he wants to sell them to girl schools, the way they're designed with otzers and study halls would not work for a girl school. And obviously, if we want to change that, they'd have to obviously probably redevelop their building and their scheduling and everything?
Well, the building is designed to overall be, be able to retrofit for a girl school, school, the same classrooms, and those extra rooms in the basement is as easy as changing the label for now. They could be used for anything. There's not anything specific that makes them science room or bookkeeping room. This is just kind of a vision for the different activities that could happen there, but it's, it's easy to use it, to repurpose it for different uses that would be more appropriate for girls, such as sewing or whatever else girls do.
Uh, the, there appears to be elevator for Americans with disability. Is that over there next to the staircase? Is that an elevator?
Correct.
Good, in every building. Thank you.
Correct.
Just double check. Anybody else from the committee? Mr. Clay?
Thank you, ma'am, sure. You'd indicated that the janitor or maintenance staff inside, but I think you mentioned something about outside the building as well?
Well, for, for the overall maintenance of the site, they usually, again, have, have a third party come and do that. They do the landscaping and everything, but for like small things, like let's say a snowboarder for some...
Small things around the building.
So that, the storage, and that just goes inside, and then, there is storage on all the floors. But the overall, like tractors or something, that's, that's not going to be on site. They don't keep that.
A third party coming in to take care of the recreational field as far as seeding, land, or the fertilizer, liming, and all that? Do you know if those fields will be irrigated?
I'm not going to answer that one.
Do we know if the fields are going to be?
See if we can get an answer. Yes, we'll have sprinklers.
Will that be an independent well or will it be, um, the irrigation come from one of the wells that are servicing the schools? Sir?
I don't know what the answer is. So would there be, do we know that answer? It would have to be a separate well.
Separate well for irrigation, okay. And not to beat a dead horse, but one more time on the security, we're going to have a third party hired?
Well, the, the main security is, is, is twofold. It's, it's the building is always kept locked.
Nobody can come in the front door?
No one could come in. There's, there's a camera system that's, that's connected to the office and they monitor who's coming and they get buzzed in. Second, second is, is that usually the schools hire someone. Forgot the name. There, there, there is a certain name, a certain iron rock is usually used by the schools.
That, that'll be a.
But they're, they're not on site. They're, they're driving around, you know, keeping tabs on what's going on. They're not, they're not, but we're not proposing a security guard sitting there at all times. If that was the question.
You know, well, it was, um, but except for buzzing somebody from in the school, looking to see where it is and hitting a button to let them in. That's it for security.
Correct.
Thank you.
Again, I, I, I don't think the applicant would be opposed if, if, if that was a concern.
In this day and age, I would hope so.
Okay, and, and again, this is just based on what's normally done in high schools in Lakewood. But you, you're probably right that the, the security should be looked at much closer today's day and age.
Granted, a private school versus a public school, but I went to pick up my grandchild at a, of a public school and the security was impressive, I'll say. Thank you.
Sir, you, you touched on the cameras again. I just wanted to get it right. They're monitored in the school and also the police department will be capable of monitoring them.
Correct.
Somebody monitoring it all the time. You have a camera room in the school that somebody is monitoring them?
There is, there's always a camera in the office and that, and that camera's outdoors, the hallways. They're big spaces that's being monitored in the office. Besides that, I, there is, there is, there is a hookup with the police station. I think that's the way it's done.
All the entrance ways and driveways covered in that too? I mean, you have the outside cameras too?
I believe so.
Believe so, okay.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes, that's what we're going to have.
Just to piggyback, piggyback off Mr. Cleve for a second. Are you opposed to security guard, meaning many schools are able to, as long as you're a certified private school, to get um grants that would probably provide a potential security guard, maybe sharing between the three and circulating between other schools in the vicinity? Would you be opposed or you're just not sure yet?
I, I'm not opposed to that. It's just not my, uh, I, I'm not putting it both ways.
We'll have a security guard. They don't, they don't oppose that. Three, we'll have one for each building.
We can make that a condition?
Yes.
Along with the cameras inside and outside?
Correct. Okay, and at this time I'll call up our planner just to go through the couple of design waivers that we're requesting.
Hi, Justin Hossiello, AUCIE LLO.
You, you attest to say the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Ye- yes, I do.
Justin, if you could, for the benefit of the board, please give your background and qualifications.
Yes, masters in planning from Rutgers University. Had a licensed professional plan in the state of New Jersey since 2008. I'm a partner with uh Cofone Consulting Group based in Red Bank, um, 125 half mile road, speed 200, Red Bank, New Jersey, zero seven, zero seven, seven, zero one. Um, I've appeared at your zoning board a few times. I don't think at planning board, but I provided testimony um throughout the entire state uh in front of hundreds of, uh, of boards in the last uh, uh, 15 years or so.
Acceptance qualifications?
Welcome to the planning board.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Uh, Justin, if you could, just for the record, you've had an opportunity to go out to the site and the area around the site?
Yes, I have.
And you've reviewed the township's master plan and zoning ordinance?
I have.
And you've had an opportunity to review the application?
Yes, I have.
And you've heard the testimony of the other consultants?
I have.
And if you could, uh, this application is a permitted use with just a few design waivers. So if you can go through those for the board, please.
Correct, so um, so the difference between a variance and a, and a waiver, uh, design waiver is there are certain, there are certain proofs for a variance. As I think as the board knows, uh, there's a positive and a negative criteria for, for bulk variances. Uh, in this instance, um, the, the standard proof is lower. Uh, for a design waiver, it's whether or not um the relief is needed is uh reasonable. Uh, if the board uh can see that, uh, you know, given the fact the way the site has been laid out and designed and some of the features around the site, whether the um, uh, departure from um, from the zoning ordinance meets the level of being, you know, reasonable. I think in this instance, you've heard extensive testimony um from our civil engineer and you also heard uh from our traffic engineer. Um, the uh, the entrance drive lane uh and, and the exit drive lane. You heard the testimony, heard the details um from the civil. Typically, in, in my experience, uh, those drive lanes, uh, and I think this zone, um, you know, um, prescribes these drive lanes because they're fairly typical for, for commercial uses like, like shopping centers um and the like, where you are going to have cars coming and going throughout the day. Uh, in this instance, uh, this is a school um where um it's going to be highly controlled. Buses will be coming in in the morning, buses will be coming out uh in the evening. So, you know, from the standpoint of the need to have uh the entrance drive lane and the exit drive lane, whereas the entrance is um, 100 feet required and uh, and 48.5 is on Farmingdale and uh, 40.07 is on, uh, is on Fister Road. And the exit drive length is 60 required and 48.5 on Farmingdale and 40.07 on Fister Road. Um, the, the necessity really from a planning standpoint and the site layout, site, you know, layout standpoint uh is really, I'd, I'd say it's more reasonable uh to have a lesser um uh drive line for the reasons I had just stated. That this is primarily going to be utilized uh by school buses that are coming in the morning and evening. I believe we um, uh, we will comply with uh the uh, uh, buffer screen, uh, which is at um a 25 uh feet required. And I believe we'll also, we'll also comply um with the um, the driveways. One, two-way is permitted. I believe we, we are going to work that out as well. So that leaves uh the, the parking location um waiver, uh, where no parking is permitted in the front yard and, and front yard parking uh is proposed. This is intended, um, I believe we're going to bank uh most of those spots. And I believe that uh it, it would be reasonable to allow uh this, this departure, given the fact that the ADA spots, I believe are going to be located in that area. So I guess from a, a practical standpoint for the ease of uh, of people, uh, you know, needing spaces um with disabilities close to, you know, close to the entrance, um, that is a reasonable uh departure um from the ordinance. Um, so I believe in, in whole, um, at this point, uh, as of now, we require uh three design waivers. I believe the, the board can, can act on those waivers. I think the uh, the departure uh from the enforcement of the ordinance uh is, is reasonable. And, and I believe, I, I think overall there are, you know, practical reasons um for uh, for these waivers.
Thanks, Justin. And just with respect to the um, design waiver for the parking in the front yard, we are going to take a look at the building to see if we can just shift it a little bit further towards the rear because we do think we have room so that we would probably have no parking spaces in the front yard setback. But as of now, there are the few that are along the building that are within that front yard setback. Uh, so for now, we're technically requesting that variance or design waiver.
Uh, is there, I didn't see it on the plan, maybe I missed it. Is there EV parking?
Well, we have to comply with the EV, so yes, we'll identify those if they're not identified already, yes.
Thank you.
Just one question for building A. The entrance to building A. Uh, building A, the entrance there at building A, is that compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act?
That might be a question for the architect, so.
There is a ramp on the top left corner?
Top left corner?
Top, top left.
Can you pull up that exhibit, Anthony?
Thank you, I see it now on my sheets.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yeah, I have a question for Ernie Peters. Ernie, I lost track of, they had asked for a lot of waivers. They said they meet that or are going to meet that and they come up with just these three. Do you agree with that? Are there any other waivers that we should be looking at? That wasn't agreed to as well.
Well, I believe the applicant's witness testified that they're only requesting three. So if the board were to act in the affirmative, we would only grant the three that they've requested. So if they missed one and we didn't catch it, that's on them.
I just wanted to make sure that we're talking about.
In keeping score, I, I don't disagree with the gentleman's testimony that they're requesting three design waivers from our standards.
Thank you.
Anyone on the board? Gentlemen? Mr. Peters?
Yeah, just one, the, the buffer waiver. In the initial submission, there were lot lines in between the buildings. So I guess my question is, is if you needed to pick up 10 feet, could you just move the, where the lot lines used to be, five or 10 feet and get rid of the waiver request?
I'm not sure what you're asking because we eliminated the buffer design waiver request. Pardon? We don't, we no longer requested the design waiver for the buffer? So I wasn't quite following what you were asking.
So the third, so the 35 foot buffer is going to be provided instead of the 25 foot buffer?
Kenny? Hold on a second. Is that what's required? We had 25 feet is required. You're indicating 35 feet is required?
In our report on page eight, comment D1. Thomas, it wasn't a trick question, I just wanted to make sure we were all keeping the score correctly.
Well, we based it, the 25 buffer, 25 foot buffer around, around the perimeter based on the floor area. Not based on the total volume, I mean, the total square footage of the buildings.
Okay, can someone just give me some testimony reconciling the difference between your testimony and my report, please?
That's what I'm asking. Do you, do you believe that it's aggregate building? Our, our, my, my understanding was based on the square footage of the, of the, uh, of the building footprint. So that's why each building is under 15,000. That's why we provided 25 feet.
Hold on, let us check the ordinance specific language on that.
Most of all, I'm anxious that the uh community has an opportunity to ask questions and it's getting late. Lots of you have to go to work tomorrow morning, so uh, so I want to make sure you have time. So if we could do this.
We, we can address this offline before back to the board?
Between, among the professionals after, you know, at a later date. So we want to get to the uh.
Yeah, I understand.
Thank you.
I just have two uh questions if it comes down to the conditions of approval. Are, are we requiring a, a condition of approval um that the um, that the boys not uh drive to the campus?
That is correct, the boys will not be permitted to drive.
So it'd just be the busing and the drop off of the parent?
Correct.
Um, and then one more, so when it comes down to the use of the uh building will only be used for school-related activities, correct?
Correct.
Any other questions? Mr. Jennings, would you like to say?
Well, I think we're going to probably have to come back and address some of the questions, so I'll save my summation for the end and perhaps we just move to the public portion.
This is how we're going to handle the public portion. You can't talk for a half an hour because we'd like as many of you as possible to have an opportunity to ask your questions. Please listen carefully so you do not ask the same question twice. We want to get as many questions from you as possible. So please be brief. And you'll be asking your questions of the professionals. Identify each professional and speak no longer than five minutes, please. Thank you.
Uh, also, there are, there are two different type of questions, so everybody knows the form of these things. Uh, you have one question, which is technically a cross-examination question of the expert. So specific thing he talked about, a specific slide that he talked about. Then the second method of doing is just a general comment. So if you want to come in, if you have your own opinion about the entirety of the complex or you have an opinion about, you know, what it means or what's going on, there's, there's a two different questions. So i- if you do have a question about an expert, just identify that in the beginning. Just, uh, you know, just request that you have a question about the engineer or the architect or something like that or a specific slide to that effect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. Uh, do you, um, you attest to say nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
All right, and your first and last name?
John Spaltoff, S.P.A.L.T.H.O.F.F. You knew my address? Two Ruby Court, Jackson. I have both opinions and I have some questions, but I will not take more than five minutes. Tonight you have an application before you for preliminary and final site approval. Well, I did hear Ms. Jennings just say that it's likely we will carry this on. In my opinion, there's no way uh that this can ever be approved anytime soon for final, as there's way too much missing and unanswered that this could even be considered for a final approval. You don't have the PD, the fire department, the tree reports, the landscape is missing. The professionals haven't even seen the exhibits that were up until this evening. There's a lot of stuff here that's missing that I feel like we're trying to push something through um to make it move quick. And that can't be. Will enrollment be capped at 174 students per school? I believe that was the number that we heard earlier. I guess I would be asking that to the applicant or to Ms. Jennings?
Yeah, that's the proposal now because the parking is related to the number of students going to the school.
So by approval or by statute, it would, they would never be able to have over 174? I just want to.
Well, I guess technically there's room for more parking because we have 232. So I wouldn't want to say never could have it. Um, but the goal here now is to leave the students at 174. I think it has a lot to do with the way the schools are run, the number of students they want per teacher. So I don't think that it would be more than that. But right now our proposal is for this number with the parking at the 174.
Okay, so it, it could grow down the road is the point, or the question, I guess.
Anything's possible.
Anything's.
Will you stipulate to that number?
Yeah, we'll stipulate to that number. But like I said, if it's in the resolution and something changes, you can always come back to the board and ask to be given relief for that, for that change.
And just to be clear, so one of the conditions of approval that are going to be put into this, uh, there's going to be. And just to be clear, so one of the conditions of approval that are going to be put into this, there's going to be a code, code enforcement mechanism for a look back period. So if the zoning officer code enforcement goes out there, takes a look at it, sees that there may be a need for more parking, and they come back before the board, and we do a yearly assessment after a reasonable amount of time, and they may need more spots, but the code enforcement, you know, slash zoning officer will have the ability to go and inspect that.
Thank you. My next, yes?
And Ms. Jennings just stipulated that's the conditions that she agreed to. But now if it goes higher than that, she's going to have to come back in front of the board to get approval.
I understand that. Yes, thank you. In regards to deliveries, I just, I, I think everybody sitting behind me is realistic that we're not talking just three deliveries a day. I, I'm a school superintendent. I've run schools for 18 years now. There are more than three deliveries a day regardless of food delivery. It's just the nature of running a school. You have copy paper that gets delivered. You have Amazon trucks. You have whatever. It, to, to say that we're only going to have three non-school-related deliveries or, or, or non-school buses in there just is not a realistic number. In regards to traffic, Dr. Campbell's question about New Prospect Road onto Fister was not answered. We immediately jumped to widening the eastbound direction. We're going eastbound on Farmingdale Road. I live on Ruby Court in Farmingdale Woods. That is a horrible turn to make, let alone to make that quick right into Fister. Now you're going to have buses doing it. In regards to buses, three buses per school. That's not realistic. You're not getting 50 kids on a bus all across town. Those kids will be on a bus for two hours a day trying to pick all of them up. So when we sit here and when we say there's only going to be three buses, then there may be 10% are cars. So 10%, if I, if I do my math right, you know, you've got probably 50, 60 cars plus probably at least a dozen or so buses. The, the reality of, of that we're going to cram 50 kids into a bus and pick them up all over Jackson and bring them here, I just, it's not realistic.
Ladies, ladies and gentlemen.
In regards to the design waivers, and I, I appreciated the planner's testimony on that because I wasn't sure why we were looking for a design waiver when, to me, this should be before the zoning board as a variance. But if the relief is reasonable was the term that he used or the statement. They're asking for relief because simply they're overdeveloping this lot. You've maxed out the use, which requires you to need relief, or better yet, for the courtesy of this board to overdevelop this site at the detriment of the neighbors, but at the benefit to only one person, the applicant, and only to the applicant. It's reasonable in the applicant's eyes, but not to those of us who have lived there and have set our roots in this residential zone. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, for extending me the opportunity. I have one question to start and then you'll see the relevance. Oh, I'm sorry. Eddie Flaitman, 28 Gables Way. I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. By a show of hands, how many members of the board are elected officials? One. The balance, I presume, are all appointed. Is that correct?
We are volunteers and we are your neighbors.
In my career, I spent 46 years in the planning and zoning stages, okay? I would option properties, have them approved, and sell into a builder. I've been called as an expert witness. I've been an applicant myself, and I have sat on a planning board for seven years. So I've heard just about everything. I seen, I've heard some hiccups in tonight's testimony. Let's start with the road coming in and out of the school. It doesn't comply to the 100-foot roadway. It's going to be less than 100 feet. Okay? Now, therefore, and it's, oh, also, there's only going to be one roadway instead of two. Therefore, that should back up the circulation around the school buildings terribly and cause a lot of grief for the parents waiting for their children on a rainy day. Okay? That being said, okay, excuse me. Does this applicant comply with the current zoning or is it, is it missing various variances?
We have no variances. Permitted use with no bulk variances.
No variances. It's clean. Okay, all right. That being said, okay, the people of Jackson Township elected officials to protect them and to try to make it as comfortable as possible financially to live in Jackson Township. The way I understand it, this was 27.3 acres. Is that correct?
No, I think it's 7.7.
Okay, give or take, okay? If that was rezoned to 24 lots, okay, with the septic, we would not need an Egyptian permit, okay? And we could generate a lot more tax dollars than we will with a school zone.
Wait, you have to understand that schools are a permitted use in that zone. We're, we're not doing anything that is not permitted, and we are required by law to follow those permissions.
So you're saying something permits the schools?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, that was, you know, that was what I had to say. Anybody have any questions to me? Fire away.
Thank you for your, thank you.
Do you want to buy the property?
Thank you.
Buy the property. Thank you.
Do you want to buy the property?
Thank you.
Next, please.
Hi, Diane Campagna. I live at 5 Topaz Drive in Jackson. I am part of Farmingdale Woods Development. I'm Mr. Spaltoff's neighbor. Um, I have.
Hang, hang on one second.
Yes.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. I've lived at 5 Topaz Drive for 20 years. I have two kids that have gone through this Jackson School District, one that is a freshman in high school. I'm well aware of.
Could you pull the microphone closer?
I'm well aware of the traffic and the movement of that area as living there a long time. I am really confused on how anything would, would be allowed to, to happen in that neighborhood. First of all, Farmingdale Road is a 45 mile an hour zone, which people cut through Farmingdale Road to Route 9 at 60 miles an hour, of which in 2019, a child was killed for that reason on that road. Second of all, you're allowing a left-hand turn signal, and if you are driving down Farmingdale Road east, you get the sun glare every morning in that intersection. So how are you going to stop the incoming traffic from hitting your left-hand road without proper traffic lights to allow that in that dog trot thing we were talking about? Third of all, you have a minimum of three school buses for each school. How are you going to stop these school buses and other parents who don't live in this neighborhood from cutting through Sapphire and Fister on a 25 mile an hour zone? Are you going to cut off Fister Road so they cannot go through our neighborhoods where it's 25 miles an hour?
That may be a question for the traffic expert.
Exactly. So.
We can ask the traffic.
Yeah, I would like.
Let's do that.
I'm sure the applicant would be willing to restrict buses from using Fister and going in that direction. There, there's no need for the buses to go in that direction unless, of course, there are kids that live back in that neighborhood. I don't think that's going to be the case. So we, we can agree to restrict those movements.
So there would be, maybe signs could be put up to say no left turn. So the bus, a bus could not make a left turn and go down Fister into your, I was, I drove all through there yesterday. So I'm well aware of what your concern is.
Um, I also have another question. What date in September was the traffic study done?
The manual counts were done the second week of September. The automatic traffic counts, the road tube was the third week of September.
Was that?
And we used the highest. I do. I know the automatic traffic counter was put down September 21st, and it was out there for a week, so until September 28th.
Okay, so the 24th and 25th of that week, Jackson Township schools were closed. So that's not really.
And those counts, and, and those, and those days weren't used, so no issue there.
Just one at a time.
And the manual counts were conducted on the 21st. And the automatic traffic counter went out and stayed out for the week after the 21st.
And so how are you going to slow down the traffic to make these, all these lefts and turns and rights when there's a lot of blind spots on Farmingdale Road? It's a small country road with no sidewalks.
It's a county road and it's a collector roadway. So it's an appropriate location for a school.
And then my second question is, you said that there were, when you looked at the environmental impact, and there were lots of animals or wildlife that could be affected. Living in that area for 20 years, I'm well aware of the wildlife that lives in that area. Do you know what wildlife lives in that area?
I'm the traffic guy. I got to punt that to somebody else.
From the environmental study that we did, they said that.
The microphone, please.
Let me find it first. It'll be easier that way. I remember reading it. It said, predominant wildlife to be found are birds, squirrels, mice, chipmunks, small mammals that traverse the property. Apparently, there probably is deer too.
There's a lot of more. There's deer. There's a pack of coyotes.
Excuse me.
Okay. There's deer, there's deer. There's a pack of coyotes that live throughout the woods. There is the occasional bear that travels around, and there are two red-tailed hawk nests that are in the area that are endangered species. So you did not do a proper environmental study because I, and there's robins, there's a murder of blackbirds, which, so there's the wild turkeys.
So just to be clear.
There's more than wildlife than what's on your study. So I think you should go back and look at that.
Just to be clear, uh, how this works out is that, there's a word called jurisdiction. Jurisdiction means, uh, what is in the control of the board? What do they have the ability of saying yes and no to, considering, you know, denying or approving based upon, what you're talking about is DEP concerns. I've actually come across, um, a couple of them, uh, in a couple of prior applications personally, uh, as, as an applicant. One dealing with actually a snake, uh, that was laying eggs on a certain property, and the whole property for a number of years, uh, ended up not being built, uh, upon even after the application got approved. But the reason why I'm bringing this up is because if there is any concerns with wildlife, with endangered species, the, the DEP comes down and does either a study, investigation, something along those effects, and determines some kind of either resolution, uh, and/or whether or not the, uh, the property is allowed to proceed, you know, being built upon. So i- this is not really something that, that I know it's important and it's on top of everybody's mind, but that's not something that's really within the jurisdiction of the board here to either approve or deny upon.
And I think we have someone here also who could maybe give you some insight.
Okay, good evening. My name is Jeff Riker. I'm the chairman of the Environmental Commission. So I'm going to touch on a few things. When an application comes before, and I'm going to use the word me as the Environmental Mission Chair in my group, I have to look at just the subject property. Okay? Yes, I'm aware that there are peripheral things happening, traversing properties. For this sub- subject property, it's pretty much a horse farm. I can tell you, as critical as I am today of this gentleman, he had a comprehensive field report. It had everything in soup to nuts and then ad nauseam, much more. Uh, what I do with my group is I check the heritage database up to DEP. We take an overlay, we look at it, we pull it up on Google Maps. You know, short of going out there and romping through the property, uh, this one is a little easier because it's clear cut that it's predominantly a horse farm. So while he is correct, and you may also be correct, I have to look at what is on that property currently. Now, we're alluding to the great pine snake. I named it. If someone wants to get cute and throw a snake that they picked up in Maryland on a piece of property, go ahead. And they have. It doesn't work that way because if I legitimately, as a resident, find one of these protected or endangered species or threatened species, I have to report it, time, whatnot, and then the DEP will send somebody down in normal time to verify it. It has to have a photograph. It's got to be done with a certain amount of time, and that enters the database, which becomes the relevant information that we're judging these properties from. Okay, so this happens like every now and then you'll find something, but more importantly, uh, the DEP sends people out to look at these properties without us even knowing, check for birds and whatnot. They're, they're professionals. So all that coming together, in this situation, the Environmental Commission, it doesn't have an objection because it was clear it's a horse farm, and it's predominantly been used as a horse farm, and it may still be. So I just want to clear that up with, with everything.
Right, but the other environmental man-made factors contribute to the overall, overall, you know, communities' well-being.
Counselor, so in this package that they've submitted, there are unavoidable detriments, and this gentleman did go through them in the beginning, white, in depth where he didn't have to travel. There are certain unavoidable impacts. You know, are you going to hear an air conditioner? Are you going to hear, you know, a, a car horn? All those things are acceptable because they're unavoidable. You know, the only issue is you get, or you know, you know, are they running a, an, an energy plant and, you know, spewing, you know, heat and noise or not? So that's the way the Environmental Commission has to look at this prior to. And, you know, again, I will tell everyone, we're an advisory board. Uh, we don't have any enforcement whatsoever. We lean towards code enforcement, and I have counterparts at DEP that I can pull in. But for this one here, uh, you know, it's just generic, small animals, as the man stated, and he is correct. I don't disagree that there's other things running around.
I know. I've lived there for 20 years. I know what's there.
And just to be very clear, so if the DEP determines that there are animals in the property that maybe are in the endangered species list, they, just in personal experience, they actually come down, put a GPS tracker in the back of the pine snake's neck, and they track it like on a computer system up north, and you can't do anything on that property. So, um, if it is a situation that you are concerned about, the DEP will render that determination, and, and it's outside the jurisdiction of the board. Um, again, like Mr. Riker said, he takes it into consideration, because he has to generate a report himself, and it's a health, safety, wellness, uh, issue as well. But ultimately, the decision, we don't have any authority with it. It's the state agency, DEP, um, that's all they do all day long. And if they render a determination, then that's what it is, good, worse, indifferent, um, and that is out of our control.
Okay.
All right.
And another, another point, just this board has certain constraints. We can talk about safety issues that I feel very concerned about, that dog leg situation.
And the traffic.
We cannot, we cannot consider traffic. And I know that sounds odd, but according to the codes and, and the laws and the regulations, we as a board cannot consider traffic issues other than the safety factors.
Well, I, I believe it's a safety factor with the.
I agree with you. Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Frank Rizzola, and I am a senior resident here in Jackson.
Please raise your right hand. Please raise your right hand. You, you attest to say the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Just have a quick question.
Your address, please?
I'm sorry?
Your address, please.
Eight Colchester Drive.
In Jackson.
Okay, just have a quick question. Um, we're talking about, uh, uh, various schools, plus this school being, uh, presented, and we're talking about busing of these students to the private schools. Can I ask the board, who pays for that? A various schools plus this school being presented. And we're talking about busing. Of these students to the private schools, can I ask the board who pays for that busing?
One of the things I would be remiss if I didn't mention. Is that it, there is a sizable cost. For educating.
I knew you were gonna say that, but. Most of these kids are are not gonna go to public school, they're gonna go to private school and we're gonna and the taxpayer is gonna pay. For the school busing, so let's be honest about that.
There is nothing.
And we're talking about, we're talking about ten buses for this particular school, probably more and for the other schools. I don't think it's equitable to ask the burden of the taxpayers and also also the school district to pay for that busing, I think. Either the applicant should pay for that. Or the state of New Jersey should put money toward paying for that.
And those opinions are. Way out of our jurisdiction.
They they are, but you have the power to petition the state of New Jersey to pay for that because it's gonna impact. All of you, it's gonna impact all of us and it's gonna impact the school, the school district, those kids are going to, the budget in that school district has already been drained. By the state of New Jersey, thanks to Murphy, and it's gonna be drained even more now. That's, that's, that's my first thing, the other thing is nobody's mentioned Jackson Mills.
We have, we have answers. And we have experts. And we have laws, please allow our turn to.
Okay, go ahead.
Just one point, I I understand how you feel, I agree with you on a number of issues. With that being said, the township council may be a more appropriate forum for. For that type of argument and just. One reason why.
Sure.
It goes back to jurisdiction, right, so I know I'm gonna harp on that word, probably say it a couple more times. The jurisdiction that the board has to approve an application is they have to take a look at the zoning ordinances. That are part of the master plan and they have to determine whether or not those, the application itself complies with the ordinances. It it's like a checklist, if you wanna look at it, right, so do they comply with all the foot requirements, the height, everything like that, the conditions associated with the zone, with the ordinance? If you have all the checkboxes. And you're making reasonable requests, that's all, you literally take the ordinance, you take the application. And you move them across one another and if it's reasonable. And it comports with the ordinance itself and it's not a detriment to the master plan. That is what the board has jurisdiction to vote on, to approve, to determine, deny, whatever the case may be, when it comes down to. Petitioning an outside agency or the state or something like that, I'm sure these guys can do it in the free time. I would agree with them if they did, but they don't have like, they don't have the quasi judicial authority that is derived from the state that is granted to them in every reorg meeting to do that. That's just. That's, this is within, this is what's in their own power and authority to do, that's all I'm saying. So that is what's in their jurisdiction to vote on tonight.
But as a. What is the board's responsibility here?
We need to follow the laws as they. As they apply to us as a board, we've all taken an oath. To uphold the laws, the codes, the township rules, the. Zoning areas is something being built in the right place at the right. In the right way, but but we only have a limited power. And we are required, if there are no variances, to vote yes.
Isn't your, isn't your responsibility also to make sure that there's a comprehensive plan? For the buildings that are going up in our in our community and also how it's going to affects affect the quality of life for everyone?
Sir. We're governed by the master plan. If the master plan says that something belongs in an area. That's where it goes. If an applicant is.
Wait a minute, even even if it's to the detriment of the 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 community?
But the way you have to handle that is that the master plan, which we're starting this year. The master plan controls what goes where in town. If an applicant comes in and it doesn't belong in an area that they wanna put it in, it goes to the zoning board. If an applicant comes in and they're putting something. That fits into that zone, it comes for the planning board. If it comes to for the planning board. It's pretty much deemed. A proper application. And we're controlled by that law. And naturally have to follow, if we differ or if we vary from that law. We're gonna go to Mrs. Mrs. Jennings' favorite term. We're just gonna get sued.
Okay, so can I, can I just say something? Why is the public here, why is the public here hearing this?
May I finish, please?
Go ahead.
Okay. Where you have to make these changes is at the master plan. The master plan gets done every ten years, it gets done. In an interim. Between that, the master plan is being done in two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four, that's how long it takes to get it done. That's the meeting you wanna come to and that's where you can make your changes. Once the master plan has been voted on. And it's in in play. That's what governs the decisions this board can make.
So then I'm I'm at the wrong meeting, is that what you're saying, the public here has no say in what's going on, they just come to this meeting?
You like the first person said, it might be better to hear you to come to council, I'd love to see you again tomorrow. Okay. And naturally you make your statement and then you come. To the to the master plan meeting, there'll be public workshops. That's where you made your voice heard, that's where you can make a change.
Okay, I'll do that.
Change the law here.
I will send. Information to the town council and I also will have something printed in the newspaper.
Absolutely.
I just think.
We think it's very important to hear from the public. We are the public. We think it's important to hear what you have to say, but you also need to understand that we have, please. You also need to understand we have constraints by law. And we are here to protect you. From being sued. So.
No, listen.
We're listening.
When you say sue, I don't understand what you mean by that, who's sue, who, what do you, what do you mean by that?
Because if we do not follow the law. If we do not follow the rules, if we do not comply with a complying. Project. Then the township can be sued and has been sued and has paid fines. So, Mr. Bresi, you had something?
Nobody's stopping people from practicing their own religion and having schools, but is there a limit to the number and how is it gonna affect our taxes? Because when you're talking about maybe ten schools, okay, that's fine, when you're talking about twenty schools or thirty schools.
Five minutes and we, I'd like to get to the ones that people have something to say, thank you. You have a line, Mr. Bresi?
I'd just like to add something, Mr. Fleming said. About the master plan. Along with the master plan, you still have to comply with municipal land use laws, we can't differ from that. You also have to comply with any court orders that come along that mandate what you're allowed and not allowed to do in the laws of today federally. So there's a lot to doing a master plan, you just can't say, no, no, no. Somebody did that in Mount Laurel many years ago and that's why I have COVID today, so you have to go. By the municipal land use laws and all the court orders that the township receives and that's how you work on your master plan, it is a long process.
And ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to hear from as many of you as possible, there's a line forming, so if we could stay to the five minutes, please, thank you. Sir.
Yes. Please state your full name for the record and address.
My name is Lou Reel. My address is Two Gorham Court, Jackson.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Okay, my home is in the community of Four Seasons Matitaconk Lakes. We are a fifty five plus community of about seven hundred and fifty homes. I sit on the board of trustees for the community. And I'm here representing the board to present their position, these are not necessarily my personal opinion. But at the end, I would like to ask two or three quick questions from some of the testimony I heard tonight as a personal. On this for personal understanding. I've heard frequently tonight that. Well, we have to follow the law, this is, this is fully conforming, it's it's legal, we have to do it. I think your charter goes beyond what's just legal and what's right for the community. And I feel that this whole project seems to be out of step. With the surrounding area, the surrounding area is very rural, it's got farms, it's got horse boarding, it's got a lot of single family homes. It doesn't have any two story buildings with parking lots. So I I just think that that this whole project is out of step and that's a comment, not a question, I understand. I think that your. Role is to look at the net benefits and the net detriments to the community, I think the planning board, you're planning for Jackson, you're planning for us. Currently, as I understand it. Jackson is busing several hundred students a day to private schools and paying a fifteen hundred dollar. Cost for that and I've heard the mayor say, well, it's better we pay fifteen hundred than fifteen thousand to. To educate them and and I agree with that. But if we're only sending. Four hundred students to private schools in other communities. There are a number of projects. One that came up last week that got pushed forward to the June meeting for three forced, three buildings. This project, another project that was approved just recently. There are a lot of school, private schools being proposed for Jackson. My question is, where is the demand coming from? For those buildings? If we're only sending. If we're currently only sending four hundred or less students out of town. And we're building all these schools, is that because we wanna become a net receiver of students rather than a net sender? I just think that that's out of touch with with what Jackson is prepared to do. I I heard you say that we can't look at traffic except for safety. Well, the the four way stop. Corner. About a, less than a mile away from this site. Is a. Very, very unsafe. I mean, sometimes cars are jumping that stop sign, when you're going to add all these additional buses. Onto our roads for not only this project, but the other projects that are. In the planning session right now. That intersection is going to become a very dangerous intersection. So. It just seems to me, what are you going to do about that intersection? Because it it's just not gonna satisfy the amount of traffic that it's going to be getting as a result of all these new schools. Got my notes here, like I said, I wanna be done within five minutes. All all the additional traffic that we're going to see and you said we can't look at, we can't look at traffic, I understand that. But if you wanna see what happens. When you introduce a lot of new schools. Onto roads that are not planned for those schools. Go look at Cross Street around three thirty in the afternoon. Try and get down Cross Street at three thirty in the afternoon, it's gonna take you two hours. I hear you, you can't look at that, somebody has to look at that, though, that's reality, that's what you're turning Jackson into.
One of the agencies that looks at that is the county, this is a county road. And the county will have to give clearances for these things, those are some of the applications that the professionals have to do, so they will be getting. Permissions from Ocean County regarding the county roads. We all, we have some jurisdiction over the township roads, but the county, we we can't do anything.
So will the county look at Cross Street, I doubt it, it's 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 just a realistic view.
And and I'm telling you that so that you understand that that.
I do understand.
There is some. Something in your, on your side by having Farmingdale Road be have county jurisdiction.
I I hear you, okay. So. Those are the comments. From the board of trustees of a seven hundred and fifty. Home community. As I said. We're in a fifty five plus community. Actually, the age in our, the average age in our community is over seventy. Now. Us all folks would admit it. But our driving skills have changed over the years, that's for sure, okay. I'll speak for myself, I don't drive as well as I did when I was nineteen, I don't drive as crazy as I did when I was nineteen, but I don't drive as well either. And that. That. Introducing all of this traffic. I heard the traffic engineer say, we have to look at it at the at ten year horizon, well, the ten year horizon. Is going to have fifteen more schools that are coming before the planning board right now. When you add all of the impact of all of those schools and all of that traffic. The ten year horizon in Jackson in this area doesn't look good.
Sir, excuse me.
Sure.
I see six people behind you and it's twenty of eleven. That, and I'm hoping that you can be heard.
Okay, I'm almost, I'm almost.
We have a policy to end at ten, we're stretching.
Did I have my five, I I don't know.
You're way beyond five minutes.
Sorry, it didn't seem, it didn't seem like it. I just have two questions, these are personal questions, that was my five minutes as a board member for F S M L, I have a couple of questions about. I have just a couple of questions about what I heard tonight, I heard that. I I I heard that we wanna maybe bifurcate the entrance and the exits, to me, that doesn't make any sense because. All the traffic coming in is at one time, all the traffic going out is at one time, so if you have everybody trying to make a left. Into the traffic, you're gonna have one. Lane sitting there doing nothing, use both lanes in and out all the time, that way you get the most. Traffic off the roads and into the parking lot. So I I just think that that. That that's not a. A good plan, secondly. On one of the. Schematics that was put on the board. To show. The septic system. And that it's not. Out of proportion to other septic systems in town, you showed a whole bunch of. Of septic systems that were the same size, however, there was no way for us to know how close one was to the other. So, because it it had no scale to it, so. There's not a problem if you have one septic system that's that big, but if you have another septic system that that's big and it's only three hundred yards away, that could be a problem.
So just to go back to jurisdiction, my favorite word, right? So, so when it comes down to septic tanks, that's D E P again, it's not, it's underground.
Sorry.
It's it's D E P again, it's it's underground, not above ground, not part of the ordinance, we can't even take a look at it.
Why was it presented tonight then?
It was it was presented as part of the testimony, he's the engineer.
Oh, okay, all right, so in just in summing up. The Four Seasons Community, Four Seasons Matitaconk Lakes Lakes Community recommends that the board does not approve this project, thank you.
Hi, my name is Donna Perdak. I live at three thirteen Fister Road.
Please lay, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Absolutely. I live right across the street where they're gonna be coming in and going out. My driveway is right there, my grandkids. Get on the bus there. I'm not opposed to the school. But I am opposed to what they're saying. That it's gonna. Do for the community, which is nothing. I mean, that picture there. I realize it's an artist's rendition. But they have lights on the other side of the street that goes across my property.
The lights that they have proposed are. Lights that go down, they will not. Go over onto your property.
They have lights on the opposite side of the street of the school, that is my property. In that picture. If those aren't lights, then what are they?
It's a conceptual rendering.
I understand that.
They're only, that's just an artist's rendering.
I understand that.
That are in proposing the property are. Down focusing lights.
Did they do a study on the wind and how it blows? I could tell you it blows from west to east. And everything comes my direction, so if there's carbon monoxide, noise, anything, I hear it, I heard horses winning when it was. You know, a a horse farm. You know, I'm not saying that it shouldn't be built, everything they said was very nice that, but. They left a lot of things out and they had a lot of time. A real lot of time to make sure that they had all their ducks in order. And they didn't do that, I think the application should be pulled. Thank you.
My name is Denise De Pace, I live at eleven Devonshire Way.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. My questions for the applicant, the students that are going to be attending this school, are they only from Jackson, or will they be coming in from other towns?
I think they'll come in from other towns as well.
So, we're going to have a lot of non-residential traffic from other towns coming in. That's one of my concerns. The traffic planner said that there's probably going to be about nine buses with 45 students on each bus. That means each bus is going to be making 45 stops every morning and every evening. So that's a total of 405 bus stops every morning, making it a total of 810 per day. My concern is for the safety of the students. Some of those students are going to be on that bus for 45 bus stops. How long will that take? And the students are going to be coming in at 7:15 a.m. So how long in the morning are they going to be on these buses?
I think you're directing a question at the traffic.
At the traffic engineer, I'm sorry. So what time are some of these students going to have to get on the bus to make 45 bus stops from, coming from other towns as well? That's a, that's a safety concern for children.
All right, one at a time.
It depends on where they live. And maybe it won't be 45 stops. There may be three or four kids, just like in Jackson. I see bus stops for the Jackson Public Schools where there are multiple kids waiting for the bus at a bus stop. So it probably won't be 45.
But you can't guarantee that.
Can't guarantee it, no.
So some of these children could possibly be on the bus for 45 bus stops, coming from other towns. My other concern is the 177 parking spots. No students will be driving to the school. So why do you need 177 parking spots when there's only going to be 15 employees, oh, I'm sorry, 15 employees per school? That's a total of 45 parking spots that you're going to need.
Because the ordinance requires us to provide one for three students. So we are meeting the ordinance requirement so that we are variance free.
Well, that's a legal thing, and I guess we can't challenge that. Okay, those are my concerns, and I'm hoping that the board denies this application. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Al Cicconi, C-I-C-C-O-N-I. I live at 1,005 Farmingdale Road. Of the 13 lots and blocks that are 200 feet, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, I promise to tell the truth.
The whole truth, nothing but the truth.
That's all I know. Okay, so of the 13 lot and blocks that had been notified for this project, I own six of them. It's nice to finally meet these people, because I've walked across the street to try to introduce myself for the last few years. I haven't heard anything. No one knows who the owner is. So anyway, my, my problem is, or my question is, and it's to the, probably one of the engineers, is there some sort of equation that's used to determine the size of the septic system based on the amount of people in the building? So how do you determine that?
The size of the septic system is based on number of people using the building, as well as a total gallon per day provided by the state regulations.
So is there like a factor of how many times a student would use a bathroom that would be figured in, or?
There's a, there's a 10 gallon per person.
Okay, because I mean, it's a 12-hour day. So it's, would be pretty realistic to assume a student would use the bathroom maybe twice a day, three times maybe. Okay. So assuming, so assuming that the students, and going by the numbers that you had mentioned, if everyone used the bathroom just once a day, that's 350,000 gallons of sewage that we're putting out into, into, into the local groundwater. If you flush the toilets twice a day per person, that doubles. Three times, you're up to a million gallons of sewage per day. Are we building like a commercial sewage treatment plant over there? Because that really concerns me, because I have wells that are fairly shallow, like kind of the type that like Johnny fell in the well, you know, those old wells? And the groundwater there is pretty shallow. So I'm very concerned about the pollution of the groundwater. And I'm also curious if there's any perk tests have been done there yet, because it's a pretty high water table.
Yeah, we've done some tests. And the other thing is, they'll have to provide groundwater mounting, this monitoring as far as, you know, pollutants go. They'll have to do some testing there for that. And there's a radius that that's determined on with the state. But the other thing is, it's based on all the gallons per student, and I think our gallons per day are less than 6,000.
Yeah, I mean, if you go, I kind of did a little bit of calculations, too. If you used like a 1.6 gallon per flush toilet.
That's three gallons if you flushed it three times.
Right, but times the amount of students, it adds up quite quickly, especially yearly.
500.
Yeah, per year. You're talking a year.
1,500.
Yeah, here, I have it right here.
Oh, you're talking about a year.
I'm talking yearly. I mean, a million gallons.
That's a lot.
It's quite a bit.
I think with the way they treat them now with the, with the building and the chemicals that they use to pre-treat them.
So, yeah, that was.
Can you hear that?
Okay. That was going to be my next question. Like, what's involved in this treatment? Sounds like we're building like a sewage treatment plant across the street.
I guess sort of, that, that's true.
Yeah.
That, I mean, you have, you have pre-treatment for the effluent, but then the effluent's just like a septic system. And there are different modules, and we do have someone here to explain it to you if you'd want to.
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
So just real quick, what, what is your expertise? I don't believe we swore you in.
Yeah, you'll need to swear me in. I'm a professional engineer. I'm helping do this septic for the applicant.
Gotcha. Okay, please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Absolutely.
Right. And credentials and the record and?
Good evening. My name is Kyle Kopacz, K-O-P-A-C-Z. I'm an associate at Whitestone Associates, Inc. We are a geotechnical and environmental consultant firm. I've been a licensed professional engineer for the state of New Jersey. I'm licensed in other states as well. I've not testified in front of this board, but I have testified in front of other municipalities. I got my bachelor's degree from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute back in 2012, and then my master's degree from Norwich University in 2015. And my license is in good standing.
The board accepts this qualification? Thank you.
So the question you asked is a valid one. The state of New Jersey, the New Jersey Administrative Code actually dictates how you design septic systems and what you put in. When you get to a certain flow rate, which the school will, it exceeds 2,000 gallons per day, you have to submit what's called an NJDP permit and actually go to the state, do monitoring the structure that we discussed, the 30 by 40-foot structure that will pre-treat the sewage. You need to do periodic testing, submit it to the state. So actually, the system functions very similar to any home system. You know, I'm in a septic system as well. It's nearly identical. It's just the amount of flow that's going out. Just for the concerns you have, the state wants to make sure we're not exceeding any limits, particularly when it comes to nitrogen or other things like that at property lines. This is all dictated at the state level, and if there are any local ordinances, we'll adhere to those as well. But we now need to have someone on site periodically doing inspections, testing, submitting to the state. If there's any exceedances, we need to remedy that immediately. If not, the school will be shut down, the applicant will be fined, whatever it might be. So all your concerns will be controlled through the state level.
After the fact, though. I mean, there's, you know what I mean? Like, we're creating a problem, and then we're going to monitor it. It's not.
That's also incorrect. You know, we design, obviously, there's a factor of safety in there. So these are just controls, as you would with anything else, with pavement, with your building. There's going to be ongoing maintenance. We'll need to take a look at something. But this is designed to actually exceed what the capacity is. And the values you said, those are dictated at the state level again. So we design, it's a vast overestimate. So the system will function as designed.
Wouldn't, wouldn't, I mean, I'm, I'm not, you know, I don't have your whatever, but wouldn't it make more sense to build a school where you have public sewer and water, put it into a rural area?
That's a planning and zoning. It's not matched for that.
Well, you know, apparently anything's game because it's on the code, right? I mean, so you could basically build a school anywhere you want. Here a school, there a school, everywhere a school. But it's, it just doesn't make sense. Like, all right, so just say, I took the time to look at your plans, right? So on the plans, I did a count on the bathrooms, just because I couldn't believe, like, we're going to allow, like, I, when I built my house across the street 20 years ago, more than that, 30 years ago, I had to have a 1,000-gallon septic tank, a big leach field for three, two and a half bathrooms, right? So now, you guys are building this enormous school with, here, I counted bathrooms, just for shits and giggles, right? So you got 70 toilets, 68 urinals, and 73 hand sinks, if not more. If, have you walked into Newark Airport? Because that's pretty much what you guys are building over there, right? So if you line them up, bathroom to bathroom, like a bathroom stall, you'd have 600 feet, lineal feet of bathroom stalls. Like, that would be from here to across the street. And all that's going into our groundwater. Like, it just doesn't make sense. You wouldn't build a stadium on a septic, right? I mean.
Excuse me. We're looking at almost 11 o'clock. If you could just.
I've lived here for 60 years, and you're going to take my time down to 10 minutes?
55 years, so I know just how you feel. But there, I have asked for five minutes so that everyone can speak. We still have people who want to speak. We.
Right. So one more concern. I'm going to say it the 18th time. Jurisdiction. I understand fully what you're talking about. I have a septic tank system myself. I know the issues that can arise with it. But when it comes down to the septic issues, there's nothing the board has jurisdiction or.
The area on Farmingdale Road, behind Fister, you guys were preserving farms because it was a sensitive area.
What I'm saying to you is that this is an issue that the DEP comes down and inspects. And if they don't approve it, the whole thing comes back before the board.
Well, it's going to get approved because you guys are the stamp here.
No, 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 that's, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that the DEP is the stamp. So let's, like, theoretically speaking.
Let's just, hear me out, though. So on Fister Road, behind Fister Road, there's a, there's a stream that feeds the Matasquan River.
You don't have to testify to me. I'm just telling you jurisdictionally what they have the power and what the state has the authority to do. Also, the Ocean County Board of Health also regulates it. So there's two different jurisdictions that look at the same thing and determine, you know, whether it's viable or not. So one of the things you could do is that you contact the freeholder who's in charge of the department.
Yeah.
They're phenomenal.
They don't live across the street, though. You know what I'm saying?
I, no, I fully understand you, but there's different forums that, that you can, because you can keep on going with this, but the problem is that there's nothing that the board can do jurisdictionally to.
Okay. Well, it's just a massive amount of raw sewage. It's not even like a house where you have a washing machine, dishwasher, and people take a shower. This is concentrated sewage. It's not like a lot of water draining into the ground. It's sewage.
Right. I get it, and the DEP also understands that.
And then my other question is for the county engineer. Where's that gentleman? You had mentioned about widening the east side of Farmingdale Road. That's me. So I want to hear all about it.
I just looked at the plans. There's no widening on your side of the road. It's on our side of the road, all within the county right of way. None of your property is going to be taken. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Joseph LaFarge. Live at 315 Sapphire Drive.
Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. I just, I have two concerns, and I think they both connect with each other. I'm actually surprised. There wasn't too much talk on fire. It was only brought up by Mr. Fleming, I think. When we saw the architect drawings for the basements in three buildings, yeah, there were no egress exits, like windows and stuff like that. There was no emergency exits leading out. So these buildings are death traps, especially if they're going to have classes inside the basements. The architect didn't explain a good, a safe way of getting out if the first floor was consumed by fire and flame. So.
I think he actually indicated that we were going to add and revise.
Uh, revise that architectural plan to show access out to outside. Okay. Also, about the sprinkling systems and stuff, a lot of the water's got to get drained from the wells. My concern of being a resident around the corner is the amount of water that's going to be taken out of the ground. Is that going to affect any of the houses in the community? Because I don't think that there's going to be water and sewer coming down our street anytime soon. And if, I guess my biggest fear is, is still living at the, at my residence, and I don't have water, because my well got dried up because of a commercial building pumping out so much water. Can anybody ask me or tell me that?
Yeah, so we'll have somebody address that question for you.
So wells, similar to septic, I guess I'm your water guy today. They're dictated, again, at the state level. There are certain requirements for setbacks, distances. There's also pump tests that need to be required. So when we submit that to the state, we review that just for the reason you're bringing up. It's an absolutely valid point. The last thing we want to do is have you, any of the other neighbors adjoining properties not have water. You know, we're in a very fortunate area geologically where it's a lot of sand, relatively shallow groundwater. When you go deep, very good recharge rate. So the location of the wells, we'll obviously do an NJDP permit search and locate them where on site we think they're valid, is to make sure we minimize, if not completely eliminate, any impacts to your wells. And that'll again be at the state level, that they'll certify that our design is correct and they're appropriately laid out. A licensed welder will need to come in, install it correctly. So all these checks to make sure your concerns will go away absolutely will take place.
Thank you.
Rich Martel, 20 Chesterfield Drive, Jackson.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. I have a question for the traffic engineer, and I know from traffic, you can't consider just traffic impacts alone, but more importantly, from a safety or an accidental point of view. So we already had a death there last year at Jackson Mills and Harmony. Somebody got run over. I was just wondering, in the traffic study, why aren't there any what-if scenarios? You're going by the plan of operation that says there's going to be 20 or 45 students per bus. What if there were only 20 or 25, which is more typical than what I've seen on those buses?
No, it's not more typical. I have 20 or 25. It's going to be closer to 40 or 45.
On the public system, but when I've seen the private school system work, it's not 45.
It pretty much is the times that I've looked at it, yes.
And, all right, well, we're different sort of opinion. My other question is, do you take into account that there's stops along the roadway and what impact that has on the level of service for the traffic? For example, an example, if a resident lives, you know, 400 feet from that school and gets picked up, or there's a corner there, they stop, and that stop is not for five seconds or 10 seconds. That bus stop is for 20 or 30 seconds, and everybody behind them is stopped for that amount.
Right.
But that, I don't see anything in the traffic impact study that takes that into account.
School buses are a fact of life, whether they're for private schools or public schools. And I know it's frustrating to get stuck behind a school bus and have to keep stopping, but no, that doesn't figure into a traffic study. That's, that's, that's a fact of life.
That's the level of service. You talk about an A and a B is approved.
It's a totally different thing.
But it generates that.
We can't do away with school buses.
I'm not saying you do away with it, but I'm just saying the impact on the intersection.
It's not something that's measured. It's a fact of life. We have school buses, public, private.
That contributes to the safety issue, because when you're backed up behind a school bus, and you're backed up for, you know, in this case could be, you know, a quarter mile, slowed down, eighth of a mile. Everybody along that way now is making U-turns, trying to go around. We already know the corner at Farmingdale and Chandler is a mess, and people cut through that little parking lot there. And there's going to be more of that. It's just, it should be in the impact study. I'm not sure it changes it that much, but I don't see any what-if scenario in that impact study.
Okay, well, there's no question there, so I won't respond.
Right. But I think it does have a level, impact on the level of service, because the level of service is determined in seconds, generally, the delay with the traffic light and speed conditions. And a stopped school bus along any of those roads adds to that delay for everybody in line. Okay, should be in there. And my other question or comment to the board is that you basically say that if there's no variance is requested, you don't have much leeway to approve or not approve. But there's three or four design waivers requested here, and that's a very slight difference between a design waiver and a variance thing. So I, you, the board, and the professionals have the option. So I, you, the board and the, uh, professionals have the option of taking your tough interpretation on that or being leeway. Give them the leeway, but there's three or four variance exceptions there, um, that you, you know, should consider. So from my point of view, the project should be denied at this point. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gary Lasker. I'm at eighteen Gables Way in Matitacong. I, one thing I think you left out of your, I do swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, so love me God. I always tell the truth. One thing I think you left out in your transportation thing, on Friday afternoons in the wintertime, it gets dark really early. So these students are not in school till seven thirty. They get out, it, it gets dark about four, four thirty. So they're gonna be getting out of school at that time. And as you said before, that's the heaviest traffic time at night on Friday night, four thirty? Four thirty for at least three months.
One of the time.
December, January, February and March, it's first changing. Those are four months you didn't take into account the traffic.
I'm out. Statement of operations, this school is gonna let out at seven thirty all throughout the calendar year, not four thirty.
Impossible.
Okay, take it up with my.
Chavez, on Chavez, not on Chavez. There's no school on Chavez on Friday nights. Anybody disagree with that? Okay. Next question I have is, how is this project gonna benefit anybody in Jackson Township? Did anybody tell me how this is gonna benefit Jackson Township? You, you, everybody on the board here. Nobody will even answer that question. Nobody will even try to answer it. Of course, you can't justify it. Especially if people don't live in our area.
I, I'm, I gotta go back to legal interpretation.
Then it's a waste of everybody being here tonight. If you have no power and no authority, why did you even call a meeting? Why not just stamp it?
Because you.
You have no power.
Sir, we follow municipal land use law.
So why didn't you just say we should come here tomorrow night instead of today?
Okay, you're being harassing. Okay.
I'm not harassed, but I apologize. I'm just a, a little annoyed.
Hear what I'm gonna say, or I could just turn off the mic and I'll make a motion to adjourn. Because we have a hard stop at eleven. Turn around, it's eleven ten. Okay? Out of our kindness, we are here for you.
And we're here for you. We're here the same time you're putting here.
Excuse me. The only tenant that we have to stick with is municipal land use law. It applies equally to every one of you, to every one of us. Should we wanna buy something? Should we want to develop it? Okay? That's all we have. That's all we are allowed to do is stay within those parameters.
All right, I, I.
So what happens here is, well, why, you know, can this person build a shopping center? Why could this guy build an office? Because he bought the property, therefore he has the right, if it fits in the zone, and I'm gonna break this down real simple. It's like having a wedding. You come home, you tell mom and dad we're gonna have a wedding. Then a zoning will tell you if you're gonna have the wedding. If they say it's okay, it fits, it ships, come on over to planning. Now, we're gonna work to make sure that this is a safe project, that it meets the criteria for municipal land use law. And then we're gonna adjudicate on it. Okay, that's the way it works. The only thing we have to work with is municipal land use law. That's it. You can't spot zone. You can't make up your own rules. It's not allowed.
So you say traffic is not a consideration?
Un- unfortunately, yes. And I'll tell you how bizarre it is. We handle the properties over by Great Adventure. Half of it is in Millstone, half of it is in Jackson, part of it's federally impacted. As much as we all complain and we want something done, we have zero power over. You can go to the Ocean County Planning Board and you can go to the Mama County Planning Board and you can go contact your senators over there.
Right.
Okay. You see any progress over there? Not.
So what's the, what's the point of all this?
Again, we're not allowed to rule on traffic. That's what is in municipal land use law.
But this was a misrepresentation. True. School is not till seven thirty on Friday.
Yeah.
That's a big day. That's a weekend.
Counselor, how we go with the, uh, statement of operations, it's, it's in the evidence stand.
I believe, Mr. Ray, you answered that question when I asked you about Friday night specifically. You said that you used the average throughout and did not count that specifically. Mr. Bruce, yeah, I can tell you, if I looked at the four thirty hour on a Friday, the, the level of service would still be fine. One of the gentlemen that came up here before was very honest. He said, this is a rural area and it is. And the traffic volumes on Farmingdale Road are reflective of the fact that it's a rural area. They're not very high, quite frankly, even at four to five in the afternoon. Having said that, there was one thing I neglected to mention because I know the planning board members have heard me say this over and over again, all the times I've appeared before the board. Public may be unaware of it. Every applicant that gets a land development a- approved in Jackson or anywhere else in Ocean County pays a traffic impact fee to the county. The county requires that of every development that gets approved. This applicant will be no different. They're gonna pay into a traffic fund that the county uses for improvements to the county road network. It's a requirement. Everybody has to do it. So it's not something that's pushed to the back burner. It's just something, as Mr. Shea said, this board may not have jurisdiction over, but the county does, and the county collects money from every applicant. Thank you.
Uh, sir, is there somebody else behind you that wants to speak here? Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. You've spoken before. We have someone else who has not yet spoken. Let, let that lady come forth first, please.
Can I speak after?
Thank you. You may speak after the last person has spoken. That's fine. You may speak after the last member of the audience speaks. Thank you.
Still a lady. Shirley Sino, forty-two Pembroke Drive. I swear to tell the truth. My first question is to Mr. Raya. At the last meeting I was at, uh, it was specified for the bordering of the schools on each road that there would be no parking signs and no standing. You did not state that tonight.
We did agree to no parking earlier.
That, that is a condition.
That's the condition, no stopping or standing.
All right. He didn't say that. Okay. So we won't have any moms picking up. My other thing is, I liked, I mean, to me, this building, uh, blends into the, the town. The first building here on the left kind of blends in with that red brick look. The next building looks like Tara. The last building looks like the Jetson with that roof. I find it very hard to believe that high school students cannot figure out which school is theirs. Or the bus driver can't figure out which school he's dropping off at. So I have to challenge the architecture of the facades of these buildings. My other question is, just a second, or it's a statement, really. I feel that this whole project, and this is to the applicant, it's like you go to the doctors and he says, you're having a baby. Okay, this is good. I'll prepare for that baby. Then eight months into this, they say, oh, you're having septuplets. And I think that is how we all feel. We could handle a school. But ten schools, twelve schools, that's our objection. Three schools, it right, all of a sudden where there were none, I feel that the applicant did not consider us at all.
I got hearing aids. Oh, I didn't see it behind me.
Hi, my, my name is William Valentine. I'm a twenty-five year, um, resident of Fister Road.
Um, you, you promised to, you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes, sir. Um, one question that hasn't been asked is, are there gonna be generators on the site? And are they gonna have to be tested regularly? And are they gonna create noise and smoke pollution?
Where's the architect?
There should be emergency backup generators and I'm sure they have to be tested. I think I found a nerve.
This, this was not, not addressed, but for, for security purposes, we could have.
I mean, that's a building code that you have to have backup lighting if you lose your lighting.
It's different than a generator. Generator is not required. It's just a backup emergency lighting, which, which could be battery.
Have to be more than batteries in a building that size.
It could be battery backup.
You think so?
Just for the emergency. One of the time, one of the time.
Emergency lights.
I'm sorry.
I'm finished.
Are you finished?
Believe so.
Okay. So I don't think that question has really been asked about generators. The other thing is what type of fuel will you be using?
Well, there are no generators planned right now and the board hasn't asked us to put in generators, so there is no generators on the table.
Here's another question that I don't know if someone can answer. Do all the Jackson schools have backup generators? No. I don't know if they're required. Okay. Next question is with the traffic, has the new development on Fourth Plains Road been taken into consideration?
The one in Howell?
Correct.
The one in Howell. Yeah, that, that's in my growth rate in, in the ten-year projections.
That's not occupied yet, and neither is the one on New Prospect not occupied yet.
And, and we, I understand that. And the one I mentioned that big apartment complex Stan New Prospect, we knew that was coming. We got the traffic study and we included that traffic in the projections.
And my feeling is that, um, Farmingdale Road is unsafe now without any new development. Have we done any report on how many police accidents have been on that road?
Uh, the police have had an opportunity to review the plans. I don't know whether they issued a report or not. But again, Farmingdale Road is a county road. Whatever safety issues there may be on Farmingdale Road, this applicant's gonna have to pay a traffic impact fee to the county and those monies can be used to make improvements. That's the way it works.
Will there be pedestrian traffic?
Not from this, not from these buildings as far as I can see. I, I don't think so.
Most of our end of town has no sidewalks and that's gonna put people in the road that doesn't even have shoulders. Has that been?
Yeah, I, I just answered your question. I don't believe there'll be any pedestrian traffic associated with these schools.
Are you familiar with Eric and Needle or Anthony Fontana?
No.
They were the two juveniles who pedestrians that were killed on that road. That road is dangerous now. Let's not forget them. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Still good?
Eddie Flaitman, twenty-eight Gables Way, F S M Frank, L A T E M A N.
Notice last name Sheshevsky.
You already sworn, you're good.
Um, unbeknownst to me, I had no idea this property was going to be serviced by a septic. That being said, I turned my, I would have, that being said, I certainly would have done my homework and pulled out some wetland maps and see. So I'll turn this to my engineer. Do we have wetlands or stream anywhere on that property within three hundred feet? I don't know. One of, are you the township engineer? Planning board engineer, I'm sorry, the planning board engineer? Do we, are there wetlands on the site or within three hundred feet? Any streams?
I'm not aware of any wetlands on the property.
And are there any wetlands within three hundred feet of the property?
I'm uncomfortable answering that because I don't know.
So the answer is no?
I don't know.
Well, if there are, they're violating the CAFRA rule and therefore that's a reason for declination.
I don't think.
Okay.
I don't think.
You can't build within three hundred feet of a wetland.
We're not under CAFRA regulations.
The attorney can check it out. Okay? That being.
We did environmental study and we did a field investigation. There are no wetlands within three hundred feet.
Three hundred feet. Okay, that's just one testimony. Okay, just given the professional testimony from the people that we've heard from and given the feeling of the people that live in Jackson Township, I feel that we should not be, as residents of Taxon Township, responsible for the school system and children of a neighboring school and therefore behooves this board to decline the application. Thank you.
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting. I'm making a motion that we adjourn the meeting. I make a motion to close the public comment.
Okay, I want, this has to do.
This is it.
Mister, I swear to tell the whole truth. Yes. Diane complained. To add to Mr. Sikoni's, uh, comment and also to the other, uh, my other neighbor. If you are having experience, lived through Sandy and not having power for ten days, if you're unwell and septic and you don't have power and you have no generator, you have no way to flush a toilet and no way to run your water or your fire system or your sprinkler system or your cisterns. So therefore, all that sewage is gonna be nowhere. Where's it going?
If there's no power, the school wouldn't be operating and there wouldn't be any sewage.
But if you lose power during that time period, you have no way to do that.
I make a motion to close the public portion. I make a motion to close the meeting.
No, we cannot close the meeting. We haven't, we have, we have, we have a motion and a second to close the.
Dr. Campbell, we're still in the middle of a meeting if everyone could still be quiet.
Public portion, please. Please, ladies and gentlemen, we need silence. The reporters cannot hear.
Please, everybody be quiet. We are. Please, everybody be quiet. You sit down just for a sec or leave quietly. We're not done yet.
We have a motion and a second to close the public portion. All in favor? Ms. Jenny.
Thank you. Um, as I indicated in the beginning, this is an application for a permitted use under the township's zoning ordinance. More importantly, the religious schools are deemed inherently beneficial. So if they weren't even permitted in the zone, they meet what's called the positive criteria as a matter of law. And then you would look at the negative impact. But here we have a use that is permitted. It is inherently beneficial and it's only asking for two minor design waivers. Otherwise, it's completely in compliance and we would respectfully request that the board grant an approval, subject to all the conditions we discussed.
Excuse me, excuse me. We request you be quiet. You are not to be heard from the audience. We are recording this meeting. Please. Ms. Jennings, we had discussed that there were quite a number of things that we need revisited. And I believe you agreed that there were things that we needed to see again or for the first time. So we are going to withhold, I believe, our recommendation or any vote, any vote until we have you return with the information we have requested.
Understood. Do we know when that would be?
Do we know when that would be? We're meeting three Mondays in April already, as you well know. July seventeenth.
Oh, I mean, we're practically done here.
We are, but we aren't. The schedule is four, well, July seventeenth. That's what we have to offer. We're here night after night. You know well, I will be with you several more times within April. several more times within April. We're we're just packed. We've been here three nights in March, you know, it's not easy, but we've requested some things. We just can't go ahead unless we we see some of these things in black, black and white.
Okay, understood. Well, July seventeenth, let me check. Team is Johnny.
Just just a minute. We're we're looking, we might have another date. What? We we have a maybe a light night on April seventeenth. But we will hear that other group first. And I don't know if you can get the materials we've requested by April seventeenth. I'm not sure you can get all that material we've asked for by.
Yeah, I'm in Morristown on the seventeenth.
So it's July seventeen.
No, I mean, I know they're booked because I have hearings. Okay, everyone says they're available July seventeen.
We make a motion to move to July seventeenth.
Without any further public notice, correct?
Now, the no, you know what? I I would request that the public notice be reissued.
Yes. Okay, you want us to redo it. Okay.
Yeah, if you could, it just put on the record, you waived the statutory timeframes and.
Till July seventeen.
You go ahead.
You have a motion? We have, we have a second?
Second.
Also to close, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye. Anyone oppose?
Anyone oppose?